Yes. Good evening, everybody. This formal meeting of the Board of Education for June 23rd, 2014 is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS television services. Director Kerner is absent this weekend, or this meeting. All ready for the weekend, huh? It's only Monday. First on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Superintendent Smith?
Thank you. So, I've got a few visuals from the end of the year. The first one being, our students from Benson High's Tech Geometry Program recently donated a home that they designed and built to Portland's Dignity Village. Dignity Village is the city's transitional housing area, and earlier this year, the students visited the program before designing the structure in order to get a sense of what homeless people needed in a transitional building. After that visit, they came up with several designs before selecting one, and they delivered the home just a few days ago. The program is a wonderful example of how STEM and experiential learning is preparing students for college and careers. And here we have the visual of the home being delivered. And the tech geometry class. Another year end, before school ended for summer break, PPS distributed thousands of books that were collected during our fall book harvest. Five of our K-5 schools received eight books for every one of their K through five students. So, in all, more than 17,600 books were distributed. They were donated to us during our first annual children's book harvest, which was a really exciting thing that we did this fall. Students were able to receive, were able to select their own books. So, they weren't delivered a backpack with books. They were, ended up being displayed and distributed, and students were able to select. And actually, during the year, we had volunteers who were cleaning, and sorting, and preparing, and doing interest kind of categorizing of the books that were, and grade level categorizing of the books that were then, so that students could do their own selection of books. And part of this is the intent is to build home libraries for students who don't have home libraries. So, kids were really excited about this. At Siton, we had an event to launch our district-wide third-grade reading initiative at Siton, and we had Portland Timbers Player Gaston Fernandez and Timber Joey at the event, along with students and their families, in order to get them excited about reading and get them motivated to read over the summer. And actually, we've held a number of these events around the district with professional athletes as the draw to get kids and their families excited about reading and encourage them to read over the summer. And as you see, Timber Joey was having a great time, too. So, our Ten Great Fields Project entered its final phase this month. So, Ten Fields has been a decade-long effort to build brand-new turf fields and tracks at every one of our PPS high schools. Two weeks ago, we had the groundbreaking for the final phase at Jefferson High School. There's the Madison Drum Line. Jefferson, along with Madison, Wilson, and Marshall, will get new fields this summer. Franklin will also get a new field as part of the high school bond plan. This effort has been a partnership between PPS, the City of Portland, NIKE, Multnomah County, City of Portland, parents, and community members. And I will just say thank you so much to all of the partners who have worked on this from the beginning, because it has, as I said, been a ten-year project. It was really exciting to enter this final phase. And I got to drive that thing. It was really fun. Through a banner, it was really fun.
The high points.
It was my high point, I'm just gonna say. It was really great. Summer bond work. So, this year, we're continuing work on a number of PPS schools through the Bond Building Improvement Program that was passed by voters in 2012. This summer, there will be 12 schools getting new roofs, seismic improvements, ADA upgrades, including new elevators and ramps, and new science labs. The 12 schools being worked on this summer are Arlita, Beach, Boyce Elliott Humboldt, Chief Joseph, Creston, Grouse, Hosford, James John, King, Lane, Vernon, and Woodlawn. And just another shout-out to our community for supporting the $482 million bond that is making this possible over the next eight years. We're really excited about the work. Last summer, we did six schools during the summer improvement projects, and this year, 12, so doubling the impact this year. I want to honor the incredible thoughtfulness and creativity of the students at Mount Tabor Middle School who designed a healing mural to celebrate the life of Cruz Miller, a student at the school who died recently. The students worked under the guidance of their art teacher, Molly Renauer, to create the mural out of skateboards. The mural will be displayed in the main hallway of the school, and I think it was a terrific way to honor their friend and classmate. Dozens of Portland Public Schools employees marched in the 44th Annual Portland Pride Parade on June 15th. PPS has had a spot in the parade and sent a contingent of employees to march for a number of years now. This year's march was especially meaningful since the ban on same-sex marriage in Oregon was recently struck down. Portland Public Schools signed on to an amicus brief submitted to a federal judge arguing to strike down the ban. We believe in fairness and equity, and we're pleased with the outcome of the court case and happy to show our support for the LB GTQ community at the parade. And again, big turnout, so. So, this has been a housing development that we've been talking about for a while, as we were knowing we were going to get an infusion of students as it was completed. So, Portland Public Schools was recently, recently recognized for its work to support and help build community at Stevens Creek Crossing. It's a large, affordable housing development in southwest Portland. Hayhurst Elementary School Principal Dion Frelick and her team have gone out of their way to welcome more than 60 students from Stevens Creek and their families to Hayhurst. They recruited help from a number of organizations to assist in the efforts. And Home Forward, the organization that runs Stevens Creek, recognized the district for the work, their work to create what they called "a community of opportunity." Thanks to everyone at Hayhurst for working with the community at Stevens Creek. This kind of effort pays off in improved parental involvement and stronger academic scores for kids. So, welcome Stevens Creek Crossing. And that's awesome, yeah. And finally, and I think we have a video of our Rosa Parks Youth Orchestra and their work with Bravo. The Bravo Orch, they came and did a concert here for us at BESC. I can't tell you how delightful it was to have the music from their talented musicians. Bravo's a nonprofit organization that partnered with Rosa Parks to bring a music program to students at the school. The program's mission is to create social change through music by providing underserved school communities with rigorous music training. They've had a number of opportunities to perform around Portland, and these students have had instruments in their hands, I believe, since October, and have really, they're just like, it brings tears to your eyes to listen to them play. They've shown music training can improve social and academic outcomes for kids. And again, it truly moved people here in central office. We're grateful to the executive director of Bravo, Seth Truby, and Rosa Parks Principal Tamela Newsom, and most importantly, the musicians themselves for their wonderful gift. And I will play a little clip of their performance for you to kick off our meeting.
I played the violin when I was that age, and I'm sure that I was not nearly as good as they were. Okay. Our contract with the Portland Association of Teachers allows them to provide brief comments at our board meeting. I saw her. Oh, there she is. I'd like to invite Gwen Sullivan, President of PAT, to the testimony table for some comments. Good evening, Gwen.
Good evening. Hello, board directors. This is Superintendent Smith. Happy summer. And I am here tonight. I had a, you know, there was only 207 pages in the board book. So, for the few things that came out to me, I had some questions. And a couple of the questions actually got addressed today. They're still being worked on. But I did want to start by just saying I look forward to renewing the local option levy, and I think that it actually makes a lot of sense to renew it early, considering the changes in the legislature, and it's that more money, it's, we're all paying the same, and more money will go to where it was intended in the first place, which is in the classrooms. So, I look forward to actually working together on that one. I think with some of these changes, it's the equivalent to around 50 more teaching positions, and as you know, we need a lot more help in our classrooms, and our students need a lot more individual attention. So, with that, I didn't want to come not be seen up here, but I want to thank the staff for addressing some of the concerns, and look forward to having further conversation about this levy. So, thank you.
Thank you for joining us, and I hope you have a wonderful summer.
I hope so.
That didn't look very good.
I don't think I'm gonna get a summer, is all. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda, student testimony. I didn't see anybody signed up. No students signed up for testimony, all gone on vacation already. Yay for them. However, we do have our student representative here, so Student Representative Davidson, how about giving us your final report for the year?
I can do that. Thank you. Superintendent Smith and fellow board members, thank you for giving me this final opportunity to address you all tonight. I would like to start by thanking the members of the superintendent's student advisory committee, some of whom are here tonight. We had meetings every week this year, which was in addition to their other activities in PPS committees, which these dedicated students may have been members of. They are the ones who make my position possible, and their commitment and enthusiasm are constantly a reminder of why this work is so important. I'm sure many of them remember the open house we hosted at the beginning of the year, which wrangled a massive audience of about 15, and really didn't do much in the way of increasing membership. Despite these challenges, these fantastic student leaders remained engaged and committed to standing up for the rights and perspectives of themselves and their peers. I would like to also, I would also like to thank PPS and you, its board of directors. Your commitment to student voice this year and in the past has allowed my position to become a model for other districts, both in Oregon and across the United States. Having said that, I would still like to see some specificity and revisions brought about to the policy regarding the student representative, so the role can be clearer, more effective, and in compliance. Each one of the members of this board has worked not only to make me feel welcome, but to advocate for me as well. I see each of you as a friend and a mentor, and I say that with the utmost sincerity. I would also like to take a moment to thank just a few of the people who have worked hard to support myself and the other members of Supersac this year. John Isaacs, who brought years of student leadership and activism experience to his roles as the district advisor to Supersac. Andrea Wade, who served as the advisor my first year in Supersac. Kim Fox Middleton, who recently joined PPS and has been working hard to better engage PPS students in work and representative positions. Gretchen Hollins, who always found time to help me with what I needed and always knew how to get things done. And David Williams, who helped make our legislative visits this year such a success, and whose wealth of current information is always of major value. Additionally, I would like to take a moment to appreciate the staff and records management, who are extremely helpful this year and never once complained when I would come down with questions or ask him to look at things. As well as a few of the unsung heroes of PPS board meetings, Terry Proctor, Dan Green, and Frank Daddula. Frank is actually retiring this year, having worked at PPS since 1984. His skill, knowledge, and demeanor will certainly be missed, but I hope he remains engaged in PPS and enjoys his next adventures. I would also like to thank Karen Hewson, who, among many things, the many, many things she does, never gets angry with me for tinkering with my student reports until the last minute. So, thank you, Karen. I could talk for hours about the work that Supersac did this year. For those of you who can testify to this firsthand, I apologize, but thank you for humoring me. Unfortunately, a lot of the work we did this year was internal, out of the public eye. We had students on many PPS committees of varying topics, assisted with PPS projects within the community, such as the third-grade reading book drive, cleaning, and the Marshall High School campus tours, had budget listening sessions, and gave our initial inputs on the budget, just to name a few. We also sent a few members to Washington DC to learn more about federal education issues and the lobby on the Capitol, something that I hope will incentivize students to becoming members of student leadership in the district, and will provide an extraordinary opportunity to a few students each year. I've been thinking for a long time about what I was going to say tonight, whether to leave advice, to focus on the negatives, or the positives. Those of you who know me know I don't like to talk unless I have something to say. And I don't, and I don't want to waste time tonight by lecturing about the importance of lowering class sizes, offering better counseling and support services to our students, or emphasizing the importance of nurturing each child as an individual with their own needs and interests, rather than a standardized approach. Instead, I would like to talk about the two issues which I think I can say consumed my term: funding and contract negotiations. I know we would all like to forget about the near strike and move on. It was an extremely uncomfortable time for all of us. However, there is still a large amount of anger and resentment built up from that period, and I think we, as a district, need to make serious attempts to fix this. I personally felt caught in the middle of the negotiations. I was raised in the PAT offices, and yet, as a board member, albeit not an executive member, I received a lot of insights that were new to me. And what was most frustrating to me during contract negotiations is that, in the end, we all want the same thing: to provide an education that will nurture the children of Portland to be happy, healthy, successful, and well-to-citizens. And yet, despite this resolve, we fight amongst ourselves far too often. We let politicians come and take photos with our students. We let them slap us on the back and tell us what a good job we're doing. But yet, we are constantly underfunded. Why have we accepted the status quo? Education is the ultimate investment we can make in our community, and as a community, we have to be doing more. Every second we stand by and accept the status quo, every one of us is doing a disservice to this district and every student it serves. Taking my place as student representative will be Mina Jaiswal of Lincoln High School. She's been an active member of Supersac for two years, and also attended the Council of the Great City Schools Legislative Conference in Washington DC this spring. Needless to say, she's well-equipped and extremely deserving of this position. I feel confident that the representation of PPS's students is being left in capable hands. Sierra Jose of Franklin High School will be the alternate student representative for the coming year, should unforeseen circumstances force Mina to vacate the position. This is an immensely exciting time in PPS, especially in regards to student voice within district policies and programs, which undoubtedly reached a high point this year. I would encourage Mina, Sierra, and the other members of next year's Supersac to ask questions, speak their truths, and never forget who they represent. As our advisor, John Isaacs, said to us all year, "Don't ever underestimate the power of student voice." I think this is great advice, and would ask that they keep this in mind as they take on a new slate of issues, and continue to elevate the amount and quality of student voice within PPS. Unfortunately, Mina will not be able to attend board meetings for most of the summer, which means there will not be a student representative sitting on the board, at board meetings, or present at board activities during the summer. I would like the board to look carefully and see if there is a way to address this on an occasion-to-occasion basis. Director Buehl, in particular, has expressed a desire to see a solution to be found on this front. And rest assured, he and I will be willing to find a way to make this work, should other board members agree. I would also like to see the student representative meeting on a regular basis next year with PAT leadership. Throughout my time in PPS, my teachers were what allowed me to find success and pushed me to work harder and to be a better person. I would like to end my final report by thanking the teachers that had such a large impact on my life and education, and helped me to become an active member of my community. So, thank you for one of the longest and best years of my life, and on behalf of the students of PPS, thank you for serving on this board.
But actually, Andrew, on behalf of all of us, something to send you off to school next year.
Oh, thank you.
So, you'll be thinking of us when you're deep in your studies.
Thank you very much.
When you get down with your studies, or when you're not deep in your studies?
Oh, yes. And so, here today, we have Abby Passion from Roosevelt High School.
Hey!
And Nate Carlson, who's from Franklin High School.
Yay!
And they are just two of several of our graduating seniors of Supersac this year. So, thank you.
Great. Well, thank you, Andrew, very much for your report, and thank you, Superintendent Smith, for providing Andrew with a gift from all of us. I know it'll be well-used at Portland State.
That's right.
Very excited for you, especially that you're gonna be so close, and we'll still be able to see you and call on you, and all kinds of good things. So, I personally want to thank you for the wonderful job that you did for us this year, especially bringing the student voice. I always appreciated your very, very thoughtful comments. Very impressed with your grasp of the issues, and your research, and your, just the thoughtfulness that you brought to everything we did. And also, was impressed very much with your organization of Supersac. And I know that there's ways to go on that still, but I think you've laid the groundwork, and that's a tough thing to do, because students are so busy. But you, and you guys, know how important that student voice is to us, and so, the more that we can get students to come, we should have, as I've told you many times, we should have six students every time we have that opportunity here. We would love to see students come and talk to us about what they think is the most important part for the district, so. And then, finally, I just want to say what a wonderful time I had traveling with you to Washington DC, and I was so impressed with you, and with Abby, and with Mina, and the work that you did when we were in Washington, talking to our legislative group about the importance of public education, and what the federal government could do to help us. So, thank you very much, Andrew, and my best wishes for your success as you enter the university.
Thank you.
Others? Everybody?
Sure. I'd love to say a couple of words. First of all, you started your speech by saying this was your final opportunity to address you tonight, and my first thought was, I don't think so. I suspect that you will stay engaged and stay involved, and I hope that you will. Your voice has been just great. And one of the things I think that I've appreciated so much about you is your ability to kind of stay above the fray just a little bit. And while you were presenting the student perspective, it seemed like you had the maturity and the perspective to see both sides of the issue all the time. And even in your last comment, when you were talking about the contract, and that was a really difficult, I always felt for you during that, in particular. And you said that we all want the same thing, and I think that's one of the things that I kept saying during the contract as I ran for the board, for the same reason that teachers become teachers, that we believe in kids, and we believe in public education, and we want kids to succeed. And you kind of wonder why we get into this battle that we get into. And so, I really appreciate, I think you brought that perspective all the time, that we can get through this, and we can find a path, and we need to find a path, and we need to be keeping our eye on students and what's, what their needs are. So, I always appreciated your very clear perspective and your really clear advocacy for students, so thank you. I wish you all the best.
Who else? Matt?
I think I said it a few weeks ago on Twitter, Andrew, when I said, "Andrew Davidson is my hero." And you really are. The perspective, and certainly what's been said before, the perspective that you brought was incredibly valuable, and I really appreciated it this year. And I guess that, that's, I know this won't be the last that we see of you, so thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Ruth?
I agree with everything that's been said. Andrew, you've really taken this role to a new level of accomplishment, and I mean, talking about how the role is a model, I would say that your service in this role has been a model, and as well as your colleagues. And I just really appreciate the work that you have done to sort of make sure that we're expanding student voice and having things for, like, for example, sitting on district committees. While it may seem like a small step, it's actually pretty important to be on those decision-making bodies or advisory bodies. So, definitely appreciate your leadership and want to see, and I'm sure you will continue to be involved, to help us figure out how we move that forward and make sure that it's expanded and built upon, and it isn't just a year-to-year thing, but that your, the high level that you and your predecessors established has really increased going forward. And as far as the summer piece, I didn't realize that the new student rep wasn't available this summer, so absolutely, let's talk about how we can figure out a solution there, because we totally, we don't want to have a gap in our student voice and our student representation. But again, just best wishes to you. So excited to see what you're gonna do next, and with your life and your adventures, which I hope will remain here in Portland. We want to keep our graduates here in Portland. So, thanks again for your outstanding service.
Can I get to hop in? Oops.
Oh, go ahead.
No, you don't. Go ahead. I was waiting till all board members got to say theirs. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you, Andrew, for doing such a nice job. It was wonderful to work with you, and you pointed out something that I think, and Ruth referred to it, I think we should have that alternate sit on the board during the summertime. And so, we have a person in that spot. And I also think that we should relook at our policy, which says that basically does not deny the student representative for making motions or seconding motions, that they're a full member of the board, with certain exceptions that we've outlined. So, I think we should look at that, and hopefully, we'll bring that up this summer at our retreat and get that straightened out, because now, we're not following the policy that we have. And I think we should try to follow the policies that we have.
Greg?
Thank you.
Greg?
So much has been said, so I'll just reiterate, obviously, you've been fantastic to work with, and much like everybody else, you've always maintained a really thoughtful perspective. So, thank you for your time, and similar to Ruth, you know, you said a lot of your work has been done outside of the public view, which is actually pretty normal, in the sense of the work that goes on in the district. We come to meetings, they come public, and that's, that's when the big decisions are made. But a lot of this work is behind the scenes, and I would just say that probably one of the biggest things you could have done, which you did, is laying that foundation to make sure the students are in those advisory capacities. So, while it's out of the public view, I don't want it to be gone unnoticed that that is a significant amount of work, and it's probably, if you had to pick the two, it's probably the more important work to get authentic student voice. So, thank you, and good luck. And again, I hope that if you're not streaming us online, that you'll show your face here sometimes, and we'll get to see you.
Oh, your Monday nights.
Tuesday nights.
Tuesday nights, next time, yeah. Carol?
I will echo numbers of the things, and you know, I've loved working with you. It has been a great year. And a couple of things, I, the committees and the work that is, that students have had a voice on have been really significant decision-making bodies. So, having students on CBRC, having students on the High School Action Team, having students on the Superintendent Advisory Committee on Enrollment and Transfer. You have been the person who's really, like, made that happen, and then been the connectivity that it's coming back together with students. That's been, that's been a really important role for students to play in the district, so thank you for that. But the other thing I want to call out is that you also built a strong group that, many of whom are graduating this year, but, but another group of which are coming back next year. So, you really did succession planning in Supersac to make sure that the strength that you built this year in student voice carries on next year. So, thank you for that, because that has been part of, it's not a start-from-scratch rebuild. You've got a good core of leadership, ready to keep going for next year. So, my appreciation to you, and it's been a blast working with you.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Well, thanks again. Okay. Now, we'll move on to our next agenda item: transportation intergovernmental agreement. Since 2012, staff has been working with the City of Portland on transportation safety improvements related to the capital bond work. Before us tonight is a resolution that reflects that work. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item?
Actually, I would. So, see?
have been really significant decision-making bodies, so having students on CBRC, having students on the High School Action Team, having students on the Superintendent Advisory Committee on Enrollment and Transfer. You have been the person who's really like, made that happen, and then been the connectivity that it's coming back together with students. That's been a really important role for students to play in the district, so thank you for that. But the other thing I want to call out is that you also built a strong group that many of whom are graduating this year, but another group of which are coming back next year, so you really did succession planning in Super SAC to make sure that the strength that you built this year in student voice carries on next year. So, thank you for that, because that has been part of, it's not a start-from-scratch rebuild, you've got a good core of leadership ready to keep going for next year. So, my appreciation to you, and it's been a blast working with you.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Well, thanks again. Okay. Now we'll move on to our next agenda item, Transportation Intergovernmental Agreement. Since 2012, staff has been working with the City of Portland on transportation safety improvements related to the capital bond work. Before us tonight is a resolution that reflects that work. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item?
Actually, I would. So CJ Sylvester and Paul Cathcart, I believe, are present, CJ Sylvester is going to come on up and present, CJ, who is our Chief of School Modernization.
CJ Sylvester, Chief of School Modernization. Actually, this evening, Justin Dollar, who has been the Project Manager for Portland Public Schools on this item for the last two years, is going to provide the presentation. And we also have Gabe Graff with us from the Portland Bureau of Transportation, who has been the staff person on the city side, who has worked with us low these many years to get this IGA completed.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Smith. My name is Justin Fallon Dollar, Project Manager with the District's Planning and Asset Management Group. Gabe Graff, Operations Manager from the City's Safe Route to School Program is also here with me. I'm very excited this evening to present an Active Transportation Intergovernmental Agreement between the district and the city. The agreement will align city permitting and land use processes to create safer walking and biking to school routes for our students. The agreement accomplishes a number of very important objectives. First, it limits the district's required off-site transportation safety improvements to $5 million for the life of the 2012 eight-year bond program. It directs active transportation project funding to those schools, school sites receiving modernization or improvements in the 2012 voter-approved capital bond program. It brings all district K-5, K-8, and middle school sites into the Safe Route to School Program. It utilizes Safe Route to School staff expertise to help identify infrastructure gaps and safety barriers in our student walk areas. It aligns the district's student walk area needs assessment with that of the city's, and it prioritizes active transportation to encourage walking and biking to schools, reduce motor vehicle dependence, and sustain neighborhood livability. The agreement also requires the use of an equity lens when funding active transportation improvements. The agreement adopts the equity-weighted capital-funding decision matrix used by PBOT Safe Route to Schools. This equity lens, in fact, mirrors the district's own efforts to direct resources to overcome gaps in access and achievement within historically underserved communities. The agreement represents a wonderful capacity-building opportunity between the city and the district to address active transportation deficiencies within our students' neighborhoods and strengthens our partnership with Safe Route to Schools.
Good evening. As Justin mentioned, I'm Gabe Graff, I'm the Operations and Safety Manager with the Bureau of Transportation, and part of my job there is managing our Safe Route to School Program, and as such, I'm very pleased to be here to voice my support for this agreement. The agreement builds on our existing partnership between the district and the Portland Bureau of Transportation, and recognizes that just as students in the district deserve excellent teachers, scientifically-upgraded classrooms, they deserve safe ways to get to and from school. I very much look forward to implementing this agreement with PBS staff, and I think the outcomes will be very worthwhile. Thank you.
Okay. Any, I think we'll get a motion before we go ahead and ask questions, so. The board will now consider Resolution 4931, a resolution to adopt intergovernmental agreements with the City of Portland regarding funding of transportation safety improvements. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Director Atkins moves, and Director Regan seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 4931. Ms. Houston, do we have any citizen comment on this?
We do not.
Thank you. Is there board discussion? Director Buell?
I don't know who should answer this, but how do we evaluate the various different routes? In other words, how do we decide what's safe and unsafe? Do we actually have somebody that does that? Do we do that yearly? Do we go out and, I mean, I was dealing with some stuff at Chief Joseph early in the year, and they had that problem out in front with the buses. I didn't seem to be able to find anybody to talk to about it. Do we have, I mean, is there a process people go through, or do we have somebody who checks? Could you just explain that just a little bit?
Yes, certainly. So, as a matter of fact, I was assigned to the Chief Joseph concern that was raised before this board and that you followed up at onsite. And so we actually have a process where concerns are raised, we have PP Student, PPS Student Transportation has a safety specialist who goes out to evaluate the student walk areas as well as drop-off, drop-off and pickup sequences, and then any conflicts between buses, pedestrians, bikes, and cars. We also then, where warranted, will involve Safe Route to Schools, so myself and Gabe Graff actually met with the parent body of the PTA and the school site administrators to address their concerns and develop a response plan. The PBOT also has a process where school site administrators can make a simple phone call to call in the concerns that they're observing or send an email, and then that's routed to Gabe's team, and then arrangements are made, usually to meet onsite with the school site administrator to make the evaluation. Often, I'm involved, as is PPS Student Transportation, to address the concerns. PPS Student Transportation uses an assessment metric to score out whether walk areas have issues or not. They're quite similar to some of the metrics that Safe Route to School uses, and what the agreement does is actually brings those two metrics into alignment, so we're actually working together in parallel processes rather than at cross purposes when it comes to actually evaluating those walk areas and then directing funding to overcome the infrastructure gaps or safety concerns.
So the principals are a key person in identification?
That's correct.
And do we, do we give them information now to go about that, and we have, do we, how do we, what do we do with that?
Yeah, so approximately, currently approximately about a third of our school sites are enrolled in the Safe Route to School Program, and that requires a school site administrator to agree to participate. And then there, that includes usually then opportunities to learn about safety for walking to school as well as biking, and then if funding allows, to actually make an assessment of the student walk area. The agreement actually will now reach out to every single site administrator at K-5, K-8, and middle school sites who will receive directed contact information from both myself and from Gabe Graff's team to participate in the opportunity to actually evaluate the student walk areas and raise any concerns. We also have a series of open houses organized by high school cluster. So it really starts at the school site level, and we work directly with the principals and the PTAs to help us identify those concerns, and then we document them as well as we can, and then use an equity-based decision matrix to overcome those safety gaps.
Did we have any documented concerns this year that we didn't address and fix?
There are lots of concerns about how students get to and from school, so yes.
So we do have some still out there that we haven't fixed, so to speak?
Oh, certainly.
Do we have ones documented? Like, do we prioritize those? How do we go about?
I would say, on the first question, that we have significant, we meaning the City of Portland, the community of Portland and Portland Public Schools, infrastructure gaps. So, we have a number of neighborhoods that have inadequate sidewalks, inadequate bike lanes, and so the infrastructure that we're talking about is much larger than the single intergovernmental agreement that we're talking about tonight. So when we talk about things that are identified but not addressed, it's a community-wide conversation about how we're going to fund those improvements.
But the answer is, yeah, there's problems that we haven't addressed.
Correct, that neither the district nor the city have the resources to address.
And have we prioritized, do we have those prioritized?
You guys want to talk about how that's done through the IGA?
That's part of this process.
Yeah, that's what's so exciting about this particular agreement, is the district and the city, the Transportation Bureau agreeing on what we think are the most, the highest priorities. So we have a matrix that Justin referenced in the agreement that comes out of our Safe Route to School equity work that will rank, rank the school, rank school communities, school boundaries based on the demographics of the students, based on the density of the sidewalk network, based, so sort of there's, there's sort of an equity criteria and then a sort of transportation infrastructure criteria, and then we can work our way down. So we'll go through the city, high school cluster by high school cluster, having a conversation with each school community to identify barriers that we may have missed, because students and families get to schools in surprising ways sometimes, and then identify, well, if these are, this is the resource that we have to put against problems in, for example, the Roosevelt Cluster, these are the, these are the top priorities for that cluster to fund and build.
So the last question I have is, the fact that we have unaddressed safety problems, if you want to put it that way, I guess, that's kind of, and the fact that some of those have not been addressed, is that a, is that a, the reason for that, is that monetary? Is that organizational structure? Is that not enough people? What's the major reason that some of those haven't been addressed?
I think there are multiple reasons, different, you know, from, some of it has to do with the topography of the city and how it was formed, so you think about Rigler and Prescott, and those are two schools that are in the Cully neighborhood, which were annexed into the city in maybe the 80s. So that was part of unincorporated Multnomah County, a neighborhood that, you know, where the building codes were not the same, so those, the streets in that neighborhood don't have sidewalks, they don't have stormwater facilities.
They don't have streets, that's okay.
So they don't have curb. Yeah, the streets are primarily gravel, so making improvements in that neighborhood is extremely expensive. Sidewalk can cost over $3 million a mile on one side of the street in the Cully neighborhood. Most of the facilities that PPS owns are old, so, you know, your schools were built in the, you know, 50s or 60s or before, when most students got to, most, before, yeah, when most students got to school on their own power. So, there are many more families are driving their students to school now, which creates another dynamic. And there are other issues, but I won't belabor the point.
But certainly, lack of financial resources is a significant issue.
It is the sweetest discussion.
And also the reason why we're looking at this resolution today, that provides an opportunity for us to develop a master list and to prioritize those projects as we move forward, so, very exciting. Other comments? Matt?
Hey there, thank you. I want to say first, I absolutely support a, an MOU. I think this is obviously an important topic, and it does my heart good to hear words like equity-based decision matrix, because I think in some cases, the next time's the first time. But the question I have is, what are the priorities that are different depending on the grade levels? I know, like, for example, school zones are oftentimes reserved for, for maybe K-5s or K-8s, but you don't see as many for high schools. But then there are some, like, for example, in my neighborhood, where there is still a school zone down Alberta, Humboldt has been closed, but Jefferson, Jefferson is there on the other side of the street. So, I guess that's one of the areas that I think are, obviously it makes the zone safe. How do you determine the priorities based on what's going to happen and what's going to be a priority in a, maybe a K-5 or a K-8 versus a high school?
Well, I think you, I think we'll, we'll look at what the needs of the students and the, you know, how, first, I guess we're gathering the data, how are students getting to and from the school? You know, for a neighborhood elementary school, it certainly would be our desire that the students would be able to get there on their own, two feet if possible. So, what is the infrastructure that we need to support that? What are the barriers that are preventing students within a mile of the school today from doing that, from their parents from feeling comfortable doing that? You know, high school students, my understanding is, PPS high school students are getting to school a lot on transit, so what are the, what are the barriers to using transit effectively for each high school cluster? You know, we recently did, one of our equity projects we performed recently in Safe Routes was looking at biking at high schools, and which schools had requested bike racks and had them, and which schools hadn't. So we got to work with Justin on rectifying the lack of bike racks at Benson and at Jefferson. So, it's sort of case by case figuring out.
Yeah.
And different tools fix different problems, you know? Sometimes, sometimes a sign feels like it's really solving a significant need, but if it doesn't change people's behavior, it's not a useful tool for us.
Just really analyzing the student population and depending on the need there.
Yeah, part of the mechanism of the IGA includes an actual surveying of all our school sites. Safe Route to School currently does that with participating sites, where we do a survey of what's called mode splits, how are you actually getting to school in different ways, both in terms of being dropped off in pickups, are you walking, biking, truck pulling, coming in with just a parent, coming on transit? And then we try to identify what we can do to reduce the number of vehicle trips, single vehicle trips, to the school site and raise up either mass transit use or walking and biking. And so we'll actually be conducting those surveys to the school sites that have not participated in Safe Route to School in the past, so it's two-thirds of our schools will be brought into that survey, and we're going to get a really nice, big snapshot of what's going on at our school sites.
The other comments? You have a question?
Thanks for being here. One, my first question is actually a, maybe a technical question. In Section 2B as in boy E, it talks about the city and district agree that projects identified through the application, the CFTM, for individual schools may be proposed through conditions of approval to meet all or part of the transportation approval, blah, 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 blah. And then it talks a little bit whether we, placement of portables, modular classrooms, or reopening of a school site that has lost its school use entitlements. I just want to check, so does that mean that if we have had a school that is, has been closed, the building has been closed and merged with somebody else, if it sits vacant for so long, there becomes a whole different land use issue with it? Does this, does this clause allow us to reopen that school as it was originally permitted, or is this something different?
Sure. So, I'll get, to answer your question, so this clause actually doesn't have anything directly to do with land use reviews required to reopen a school if you've lost your entitlements. So currently, we have actually a fairly extended period of time before we lose school entitlements. What it does is that it allows us to actually use the same decision matrix for school sites that are receiving modulars or reopening to address active transportation safety improvements. Rather than directing city planners toward a vehicle solution on a frontage requirement, we're going to be directing them towards walking and biking first.
That's great, thank you. That's, it seemed like it had to do still with the transportation piece, that we're going to include them all, but I just, I wanted to double-check. Second, I just wanted to say how excited I am at this, because as Director Buell pointed out, there really isn't one school that I can think of, and I've been sitting here as people have been talking, thinking about our schools. There are schools in southwest Portland, when you talk about the ways families get, I'm thinking down the hill, literally over the creek, through the woods, and back, all of a sudden, you're Stevens Crossing. And then I'm thinking of schools in northeast that literally don't have streets, thinking in southeast, they don't have any sidewalks, and when we converted to K-8, we have buses merging with cars, merging with kids walking down gravel sidewalks, so, and that, none of that mentions the conflict that creates what I see in almost every one of our schools, where parents are dropping off kids and kids are jetting across roadways and buses are trying to take corners. I mean, it can be very problematic, so I'm really excited about this, and I appreciate us finding a creative solution to begin to prioritize and document those, so that we can methodically begin to knock those out as funding becomes available. Because I appreciate the city's awareness that these are really important community hubs, and that it should be a priority as far as how are our kids and families getting to our neighborhood schools. So, thank you.
Question? Bobby?
In terms of your surveys, it sounded like you were going to be working with PTA, most specifically in terms of parent surveys on how kids get to school and the rest.
The way we currently gather information about how students get to and from school is we send home a mailer in the fall and the spring, and it's a, it's a trip diary, so you fill it out for your oldest K-8 student, and say on, you know, Monday morning they walked, and on Monday afternoon, Dad picked them up. So that's, that's our data collect. You can fill it out online, or you can mail it back to us.
Great. I thought you had said something about PTA involvement, but I guess I would encourage us to be maybe presenting a PTA meetings around this issue, so people can bring forward concerns in terms of Safe Routes to Schools and also neighborhood associations, and just making sure that we loop them into this, because, I mean, it's not a huge investment, but $5 million isn't, you know, isn't nothing either. So, it just seems like a great opportunity to engage both of those groups to the extent we can. How will you report back to us in terms of where the investments are going to go? Will that just be through a regular bond update, or will it be separate?
It'll be both, so, they'll be, because these are all bond commensable projects, so they'll be part of the bond reporting, but also the IGA calls for an annual, an annual reporting from PBOT to make to the district.
Okay, good.
Then a representative working on this project, whether it's myself or someone else, could come then and bring, give an annual report on where we're making our progress.
Okay. And I love seeing in here Superintendent Smith, the joint obligations of the city and district number seven was joint lobbying of existing funding sources to explore additional funding. I'm assuming that would probably be like a David Williams from Portland Public Schools, or would that...
But also, the IGA calls for an annual, an annual reporting from PBOT to make to the district. And then, then a representative working on this project, whether it's myself or someone else, could come then and bring, give an annual report on where we're making our progress.
Okay. And I love seeing in here Superintendent Smith, the joint obligations of the city and district number seven was joint lobbying of existing funding sources to explore additional funding. I'm assuming that would probably be like a David Williams from Portland Public Schools? Or would that be someone from our Transportation Bureau? Do you know?
Probably a combination.
Good. Because I think that we need to be doing more and more of that in terms of us partnering with city, county, metro on a whole variety of issues. So I'm really pleased to see that piece in this IGA. And then my final question was about the, it sounds like we're investing another $200,000 with approval of this today. Is that coming out of bond dollars or is that coming out of general fund? Where is that coming out of?
That's a separate project. So we're currently undertaking a supplemental transportation plan update. So students who live outside, there's mandatory student walk area. So K five and K eight students, it's a mile, six, eight, it's a mile and a half. If you live outside of that walk area, you receive supplemental transportation. But if within your walk area, there's safety barriers to you getting to school, we also provide additional transportation. That additional transportation has to receive approval from the state. And the supplemental transportation that we have in place dates to 1991. So we've decided that maybe it might be time to update it. We're using that updating process to actually conduct a complete inventory using GIS, Geographic Information System, to map all of our walking conditions and understand what barriers exist in those areas and what are the safest routes to get to school and direct students toward those routes as a means to prioritize the walk routes themselves as we work down, work down the barriers. So the project takes place over a couple of years and it'll be also in coordination with PBOT. And that's part of our larger process of community outreach.
Specifically, the $200,000 is part of the transportation budget. There was some money in this year's budget and money in next year's budget as well because it's a multi-year project. So it's general fund money.
That's great. Thank you.
Director Martin? Here are just a couple of examples where PPS Education Services exist in buildings outside of, own ones that we own. Either we lease them or it's happening in another space. Does this also include those spaces too?
Sure, I would think so. I mean, we're interested in, we're very much interested in making long-term investments in infrastructure, just as you are. So, you know, but the, the way the agreement is set up is that the district and, and the Bureau of Transportation are making the decisions together. So I think we're, we'd be making smart investments in places where we think that both the need is there and, you know, the students will be there for the long run to use the infrastructure.
Director Atkins?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say how pleased I am with this and just really wanted to commend the staff from both the district and the city for this. This is really an outstanding example of collaboration and cooperation between the city and the district. And I know it's been a long, a lot of work to get to this point. So just the level of detail and thoughtfulness and the commitment from the city to support it and the way that we're working through an equity lens to come up with a transparent and prioritized way of tackling this backlog and this need is just, just wonderful to see. So I just really appreciate all your hard work and your commitment to making these improvements.
Anybody else? Okay. The board will now vote, thank you very much for your presentation and for answering all those questions. The board will now vote on Resolution 4931. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Resolution 4931 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student represent, oh, sorry. Tom's not here. With student representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on through our agenda, at this time, we'll take public comment. Ms. Houston, we have someone signed up for public comment?
We do. David Porter.
And is Mr. Porter our only person for public comment?
Yes.
Mr. Porter, you've been here many times.
I know the rules.
So do I, I think I can, I think I can just, I think I can just not have to read through the rules for you, okay?
Good.
Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead.
Chair Knowles, Superintendent Smith, board members and members of the public. My name's Dave Porter, P O R T E R. I'm submitting copies of a written memo, given time limits on public comment. I'm only going to read part of it. The time is now and it will not get easier. Let us bring dual-language immersion programs to all English native students who want them and to all emergent bilinguals who need them. As Portland Public Schools begins its district-wide boundary review process, Portland State University consultants have suggested that PPS board and key staff first need to establish internal alignment and clarity on the scope, purpose, values, and desired results of the boundary review process. To assist with developing that internal alignment and clarity, I urge the board, the superintendent, and her key staff to adopt the following policies and desired outcomes related to the expansion of dual-language immersion programs. One, that the board state that is the goal of PPS to increase the number of kindergarteners in dual-language immersion programs by about 600, from roughly 18.7% to 31.6% of all PPS kindergarteners over the five years 2015 to 2020. Two, that the board request PPS administration to bring a plan to increase the number of kindergarteners in dual-language immersion programs by about 600 over the five years 2015 to 2020 to the board for board consideration by October 1, 2014. Three, that the board reserve the following six vacant or rented-out schools for future dual-language immersion programs. Edwards, Humboldt, Kellogg, Smith, Twilliger, and Tubman. Four, that the board allocate funds by October of this year to repurpose Kellogg. I have seen an estimate of $2 million needed so that it can house dual-language immersion programs starting in 2015, 16. Further written thoughts, information, details follow, along with my suggested five-year dual-language immersion expansion plan for consideration by the PPS administration. My suggested plan adds three or four new immersion programs per year for five years. Two of those each year would be neighborhood-only Spanish immersion programs. The remainder are a variety of different immersion programs, mostly for English native students to be opened at now vacant schools. Now is the time to expand dual-language immersion programs. It will not get any easier in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Porter. You've been a great advocate for immersion programs and we appreciate your comments. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to the next part of our agenda, which is the bond performance audit. Tonight, we'll receive our first bond performance audit. So we're welcoming Mr. Tracy. Superintendent Smith, would you like to say anything else on that? Very happy to see Dick back here again. Is it Bill? Is that right? Bill Hirsch?
That's right.
You can start anytime.
Okay, thank you. My name's Bill Hirsch and, of course, you know Dick Tracy. And we've had the privilege of working on the first performance audit for the 2012 bond. And you have an enormous summary in front of you. It's a very long document. And you also have a report from the Bond Accountability Committee. And they start out by saying what we've recognized is the district is off to a strong start. So that's what I want to reemphasize, that for the first year, it was indeed a very strong start. We, the document, it's, oh, and also, I'd like to very much thank both staff and management for their assistance in producing this. The document is very long. It's over 100 pages. It includes some background, a summary in the beginning, there's an introduction. There's a lot of content about how the program works. We then get into some specifics. We make recommendations. There's a management response and we have some appendices. So quite a long document. I refer you or the public to the summary, if you don't want to read the entire document. And we also have a PowerPoint to sort of lead you through this. Please ask us any questions as we're going through the PowerPoint and we're available for questions and answers following it. And both Dick and I will be talking through this PowerPoint. The, the first, the first slide that we have is that we just want to go over again what the purpose of the audit was. And it's very much what you've seen from Dick in the past about how performance audits work. So the first objective is to determine if the bond program is achieving its objectives on time, on budget, and in accordance with the voter-approved bond measure. Our next step was to determine if adequate and appropriate rules, policies, and procedures are in place and to implement the program. The third was, was the district following the rules, programs, procedures. And finally, we work with the district to make additional recommendations that we both believe would, would assist the program in having excellence in their program. There are four bond performance audits as part of our contract. This was year one. It primarily covered the period from the start of the bond, which was November 2012, through the calendar year 2013. We did some testing and we completed some testing in the beginning of this year. So we indicate the completion date is March 2014. The focus of the audit was primarily on the soundness of the policies and procedures. Next year, we will spend more emphasis, more emphasis looking at the modernization and replacement projects. So that's the two high schools in Fabian. We did review Improvement Project 2013, which was the only full construction project that was complete. And throughout the program, we will identify opportunities for improvement to increase, to, well, to enhance controls, reduce risk, and improve performance.
Before you go on, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to confirm, Dick, because you've been, had a relationship with the district in a variety of capacities, can you guys just state for those who don't have the advantage of the materials looking, are you staff? Are you employees? What's your relationship and how is this happening?
Right. We, we are working as a consulting firm with the district. So we're contracted employees. The contract is with Hirsch and Associates. And technically, Dick is a subconsultant to Hirsch and Associates. We've worked together as partners on this.
Thank you.
But you're not employees of the district?
No, we are not.
That's what we're trying to, right?
The reason we came together on this is because of the desire for the district to have a performance audit and the desire to have some real expertise in construction management and design and oversight. And that's Bill's expertise. So we've partnered together with Hirsch Associates to provide this independent performance audit. As Bill indicated, I guess the message you want to say from this first audit is the district has made a strong start. There's a number of bullets why, why we believe that. They have developed a blended organizational structure, which is unique and different and seems to be working as it was designed, that involves both bond staff and other staff from the central offices of the district working together, plus a program management firm and as a team, working together to do this major eight-year program. They've developed, developed a foundation of real strong policies and procedures, which we'll talk about a little bit later in the presentation. And I know that's what you all love to talk about, is policies and procedures. But it's important to have those in place for this very important program that has a lot of high stakes involved in it. And so having a good guide starting off is important. They've completed the first project last summer, 2013, on time, on budget, in accordance with the promises that you made for those, that particular first-year project. Completed master planning for the two high schools and for Fabian. And they are approaching, and I now understand now, construction has actually started for this summer, 2014 improvement projects. They've selected two well-qualified firms to act as your CMGC firms for the, for the modernization projects at Roosevelt and Franklin. Extensive communication, we found, with the, with the community, with, with the neighbors and with the parents and with the school district. And engaged families and others in the design, particularly of the high schools and Fabian. So those are some of the high points where we feel that a strong start has been taken. The program is, I have to emphasize, at the very early stages, I, I'm not sure, but I don't believe there's been more than about 14, 13% expenditures in this half a billion-dollar program. So it's really early to say much about achieving objectives. But at this stage, we can say a few things. The nature, the location of the projects are aligned to what the bond promises were, what the long-range facility plan says and what the public, we've been communicating with the public about what we're going to do. So that's, that's a first objective that's moving ahead as planned. We've looked at invoices. We wanted to make sure that we don't spend money that's not appropriate and not for allowed purposes for what capital spending should be. And that is happening as appropriate. There are allowable expenditures. We looked at a sample of a number of contracts and a number of invoices. Success in achieving your equity in purchasing and contracting is mixed at this point. It's still early in this program. So, you know, reaching any conclusions about success is a little early about that. We looked at selection of contractors, both consultants and consulting firms, whether it was fair, was it, whether, is it objective in accordance with state and, and your rules for how to select contractors, and that was done appropriately. The major progress right now are about three months behind schedule. This is a very current number. Basically, our report talked about 30 days or so, but it's currently about three months behind, behind schedule. The major part of our report, as we indicated, is really the processes that have been put in place to guide the program, to manage the program, to ensure that we have a good roadmap for going ahead. There's a bunch of categories, program management, policies and procedures, purchasing, planning, project construction management, cost and budget, and public engagement. These are all systems and processes that we have, the district has put in place to make sure that things go appropriately. So for the next few slides, we'll talk about some of these and some of those areas too that, that where we feel there are opportunities for improvement as well. So I'll pass this on to Bill at this point. So the first element of this is to look at, at the, and what goes on with the bond at the global level, at the program level. The district developed a number of documents. I think the core of them is what we called, they called, the Program Management Plan. It's a very comprehensive document. However, when we reviewed it, it was not yet complete. Since that point, it has been completed and it, the, the final document, something we'll review as next, as part of next year's audit. There is a master budget. And when we looked at the numbers for developing the actual bond projects, they were consistent with best practices for the industry, particularly for the, the numbers for the larger schools. The master baseline schedules also seemed appropriate. And as Dick reported, the district is reporting against that master baseline schedule and the district is behind on the major projects. And independently, we'll be talking to you about the potential for making up that time. The organizational structure appears to be working as intended in terms of blended staffing. We may comment about the, what we believe would be ways to improve upon working with a construction program management firm. The, we have comments within the report about the performance reporting. It's essentially a very solid tool and we make recommendations for improvement. In terms of purchasing and contracting, I'm, I'm not going to actually talk you through all these slides, just essentially say, you have an excellent program within the district in purchasing and contracting. The district works closely with that department. We've made a number of recommendations in that area for improvement, some of which the district has already implemented, some of which it intends to implement, some of which it's considering to implement. This addresses both consultants, well, consultant selection, design bid build contractor selection, and CMGC selection. So we want to go to the planning and design. In terms of planning and design, we wanted to make sure that the process that has been used aligns itself with district policy. So in that sense, we've, we've looked at the long-range plan, the seismic study, the historic building assessment, ADA deficiency study.
assessment, ADA deficiency study, and we find solid evidence that these documents were followed and addressed in IP 2013, and they're part of the process for planning. They were included in the master planning. They will be included in the schematic and design development for the major projects. The ed specs, that occurred in two parts. There's a vision statement, which we believe is an excellent document, and I think it'll be interesting for the district to look at this two, three, four years from now, and match that vision against the objective and subjective results of the construction. I think you'll find that very exciting. It's one of the things other school districts have done. A lot of time was spent on the specifics of the ed specs, and it did require more than the scheduled amount of time, resulting in a delay in the master planning, and it had effect on the schematic design. We make some recommendations how to improve upon this process in the future, and particularly with regard to the completion of the ed specs for the lower-grade levels for Fabian and for proceeding with grant. OSM has developed a number of very strong systems for project management and construction management. So now we're talking at the project management level. And these systems have been integrated closely in with district accounting, purchasing, and budget controls. A district has hired very experienced project directors and managers, and they are an important element of why IP 2013 was so successful, and they are assets in working through the design for the new projects. Many of the practices that are in place are working as intended. We make some recommendations in a manner that existing systems and procedures can be strengthened. We're recommending that the standard operating procedures for the construction program be completed and used. The district has implemented a new change order system, for which the goal is to ensure compliance with district policies. There's a document that's produced that's intended to clarify the roles and responsibilities of the construction manager. So that's the person, it's an independent contractor, it's provided by the C, the construction manager program management firm, that assists the project manager or the project director with the onsite construction observation. And we're also recommending continued enhancements to the program management software, which is known as E-Builder.
The fifth category of policies and procedures we looked at is how we control cost and how we're controlling budget. And once again, not to be repetitive, but the existing controls and E-Builder works, work very well together. It provides strong accountability for spending and for budget, and it provides good management control over budget and spending. The invoices we looked at were, documents were available, viewed, and approved on time, and approved appropriately. There are a number of ways for the cost and budget reports that they produce, that they have developed, that provide very good internal and external reporting. Bill talked about the balanced scorecard, which is an excellent tool for reporting out at a high level. They also have good tools that are internal management reporting, just for their internal management, that also work quite well, and that we reviewed quite a few of them. We do believe that there's opportunities to better integrate their PeopleSoft, which is our big enterprise accounting system and financial system, with E-Builder. Probably will not happen immediately. It's a big project, but it would be desirable, because in the long run, it would provide more efficiency if that can be done at some point in the future. The final big area of public engagement and communications, the district, working with SIPA, have developed, I say draft communication plan. It was a fairly complete draft of what they were going to try to do to communicate with the public in all sorts of different forms. We found that, in fact, this communication was extensive, and in many different ways. There are things that they can do better, and part of that is knowing a little bit more about public input and decision-making, and how public input affects decision-making, and the role of the public in that process could be a little clearer. I think there would be some real value to evaluate whether the communication engagement processes, in fact, are having the result that is desired, that in fact, people feel positive, they feel that the district is a good steward, and they understand the bond program. It would be useful to do a look-back evaluation of that, and we recommended that as well to help improve our communication engagement processes. We made 27 recommendations in this report, and several of those recommendations have multiple parts, and some of them are quite technical. Many of them have been addressed already. Some of them are going to be addressed in the future, over the next six months. Management has reviewed every one of these. They agree with all but 1.5, because one of our recommendations had four pieces, they liked two, and not so much the other two. But at 95%, we feel pretty good that they're going to be addressed over the next six months or so. There is, as usual, a management response in this report that has been responsive and clear and complete, and that provides a more balanced look at the whole audit report. As usual, this report will also be on the Portland Public School District website, and it will be available to the public.
So we're available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much for your presentation and for your work. Questions from the board?
Director Martin?
I have a couple of comments, and one was on the success in achieving equity in purchasing and contracting is mixed. I remember a report out from staff, probably a couple of months ago, talking about a 14% of contracting level that we had reached for minority women in emerging businesses. Our aspirational goal being about 18%, but that 14% representing about a double-digit or more jump in contracting, is that? I don't remember if that was specifically on bond work, or if that was about overall contracting.
This particular, what we talk about in this report, is for the bond work for the Division 48, 49 consultant and contractors. 18% aspirational goal of that spending should be for minority women in emerging businesses. That's the goal. At the time of our review, it was around, close to 12%.
Okay.
That was three or four months ago. So there's progress being made, it's just not that goal level yet.
And the district informs us, and it makes sense, that their goal would be to improve upon the construction numbers, so that's Division 49, refers to public improvement contracts, for the CMGC contracts. The CMGC firm has a better ability to access a greater variety of firms, so that's one element of why a district would use CMGC. There are many, many others.
Right.
It is a little early to really address and assess the accomplishments of the other two, the participation of minorities in apprenticeship trades, and also the level of student participation in learning opportunities through the bond program. There's some, especially recently, some great participational levels by students in various activities, but I think it's still a little early to say whether they're succeeding or not at this point.
Great, thank you. I appreciate you bringing that up in the audit report. I think it's an important part of our equity work, and although I think the district has done very well thus far, I think it's still a work in progress, as it always should be. The other question I have is, actually, it's more of a comment rather than a question. I appreciate the public engagement and communications piece in this. I think it was clear in your earlier comments that a lot has happened in terms of public engagement, but I think it's an important discernment to make, that a lot may be happening, but do we need to do it differently that gets the result that you're expecting? And for us internally, isn't that anything new is being added to the way we communicate, but the how we communicate may be adjusted to better reflect what we actually need to say and should be saying, and how it's received on the other end. So I appreciate that little nuanced discernment that you had there when you presented those results, so thank you.
Comments? Director Regan?
Hi, thank you so much for this. I always appreciate getting the independent audits. It's a very useful tool for us and for the public. I, of course, zeroed in on those two areas where the management response disagreed with your audit findings, and I think those were actually the same two areas that Director Morton was just talking about. So when I look at, your recommendation is basically to improve the rigor and completeness of the balanced scorecard.
Yes.
There were two areas where you specifically suggested some changes. One is improving the reliability and relevance of stakeholder perspective ratings by encouraging greater and more complete stakeholder participation in surveys. And apparently, management disagreed with that. So I guess I'm questioning that and trying to understand where we're coming from. So when I look at this balanced scorecard, if you can ignore all the yellow highlights and the red all over that I've written, it basically is a white sheet of paper with lots and lots of green on it, and I think the overall assumption looking at this is everybody's happy and we're wonderful. And in fact, I think in general, that's not a bad perspective, and it's a relatively accurate perspective, but there's also some nuances to that. And certainly, the two things that we've heard the most about are concerns in the Franklin area about career technical education, and the concern in general about whether or not we have enough classroom space going forward in any of these high schools. And so I believe we need to have a nuanced report somehow, some way, or another way of gaining or acknowledging that stakeholder feedback. And in fact, we just got a two-page, single-spaced memo from our Portland, our schools, with some concerns as well. So that would be one area. Superintendent, I'd love for us to go back, and rather than just say non-concur, maybe we could provide a little bit more detail there. And then the second one is on the equity perspective, and Director Morton just commented that we've done pretty well so far, but obviously, we have a huge way to go. But again, when you look at this quickly, you see a whole lot of red, which indicates we're not doing very well. And again, it seems to me that we should have a more nuanced way of looking at this to say, compared to where we were at, we've made huge progress. Compared to where we want to be, there's still some way to go. So I guess I would ask us to look at those two places in the audit where there was a non-concurrence, and I'd love for you to come back and say, what is it that we are going to be doing in those areas to better reflect the true stakeholder perspective, and to better respect how far we've come and where we need to go somehow? Because to me, this doesn't work for me. I don't think it says it, but, so, thank you.
No comments? Director Bill?
If you look at that teacher input on these, on the high school things, I mean, there was a lot of complaining about the way we involve teachers. I mean, we have, they're like a captive audience two hours a week. We could involve them like crazy, but for a long time, I didn't. Teacher said, "Well, we haven't sat down and talked about this at length, or got our input or anything." Did you look at that? And then, did you also identify some of the things, I mean, the Roosevelt? Many people in Roosevelt were saying, "Yeah, no, we haven't been involved well." I mean, did you look at those two little aspects in a separate way?
We did not specifically look at teacher involvement in the design and discussion of high schools. It was not something that was part of our scope. But related to the balanced scorecard reporting, what our recommendation was, is that we feel it would be valuable to have broader and more complete input feedback. We were referring to teachers, but it could apply to teachers, to principals, but it could apply to teachers as well. So that's kind of the thrust of the recommendation, is to have more complete feedback. Right now, we survey principals, we survey the maintenance director, and we survey, just began to survey, the design advisory groups, which will give some of that community input, but that survey has just now recently been sent out, so we don't have results from that yet.
We know from OSM and from reading the board agenda materials, that there's been a lot of discussion this year, in 2014, about potential additional criteria for the high schools, some of which has been generated by teachers. So this will be a subject in part for our audit for the year 2014, which you'll hear about next year.
Thank you.
Director Atkins?
Thank you so much for this. I really appreciate it, and especially the incredible kind of technical depth of expertise that this went to, and those 27 recommendations and ways to improve, and then for the staff to have either been already in the process of doing them, or having done them, or agreeing and getting ready to do them. So I thought that was just a really great example of excellent expert feedback, and then the district responding to that. And I also really appreciated our independent bond accountability committee's memo, which, if I can just read the last paragraph, says, "In summary, the audit validates the district's budget and schedule assumptions that supported the bond, and verifies that an appropriate and effective management structure is in place to address the challenges ahead." But again, I appreciate your expertise in bringing some of those very specific, detailed, as well as broader suggestions for how we can even do better. And around the public involvement, I agree with what has been said, but I also think it's important, the way you highlighted, having greater clarity around what is the parameter or role of public input in decision-making, and I think we need to do better at that, of setting expectations upfront, so that we can be sure that we do remain on time and on budget, while recognizing that we want, of course, a huge range and depth of public involvement. There's a certain point at which we do need to limit that, and there needs to be decisions made by the board, and the district, and the professional staff. So I think we can improve in that regard, and look forward to working on that.
So thank you for mentioning the bond accountability committee. I was going to note that there is a memo in our packet for the public, and also Kevin Spellman, who's the chairman of that committee, is here. Kevin, do you have anything you want to add, or anything you'd like to say?
I don't think so.
Okay. Great, great, thank you. Other comments? Anybody else?
Director Boyle?
I just wanted to thank you for a thorough report. You mentioned how long it was, but it was fantastic. I appreciated its length and its thoroughness. Read every single page of it, so thank you.
Thank you.
That makes three of us that have read it. No, four, five, six.
What I really appreciated is I felt like it really validated some of the observations that our bond accountability committee had raised, some of the things we had been hearing, as well as, you know, you have 27 recommendations out of a $482 million bond program, which also says to me how many things are going well and going right with this. And what I like about the bond is, it's typical, right, for us to look at where we can improve and try to get on those right away, which is right for a learning institution. That's what you want. You want objective feedback, and then you go to it to improve. But I just also want to compliment staff on how many things. There was a lot of question when we passed this bond, of whether or not the district had the capacity to manage such a large bond, because it had been so long since we had something. And this just did a great job of reaffirming at how capable the staff has been at organizing this, projecting what the costs are. Even though there's community input, additional criteria, these things are living and breathing, and we'll continue to run into those. But I just really appreciated your thoughtfulness and your thoroughness, and your working with the district, and trying to get as broad of a sense, with also trying to keep it confined to your scope, because I'm sure that there are many rabbit holes of which you could follow. But thank you very much for the thoroughness, and I, again, really appreciated the thoughtful expertise with what you made the recommendations. And I'll just say, congratulations to staff, that it just shows that we set up a great bond program, that they are moving ahead with what they need to, and there's room for improvement, and so accepting it in that manner. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you for the complete report, and I'm really looking forward to future bonds, you know, if we really work on these things. I'm really excited about it. And I'm also looking forward to more in-depth feedback from our community about what they're feeling like is being taken into account, you know, with the information they give, so I'm looking forward to that. So, thank you.
Ready? No?
Ready? No? Mr. Tracy, Mr. Hirsch, thank you very much for your audit, and thank you for being here tonight. Helping answer our questions. Looking forward to the next one, when you can actually talk about the projects underway.
Yes.
That's great. Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, the 2014-17 bargaining agreement with the Portland Federation of School Professionals. Superintendent Smith? Do you want to go ahead and introduce this item?
Yes, I would like to call Brock Logan, who is our Director of Labor Relations, up to present the PFSP agreement.
Thank you. Chair member Knowles, board, Superintendent Smith. So, first of all, if you're thinking, "Hey, wait a minute, weren't we here just a little less than a year ago and ratified a two-year contract with PFSP?" Yes, you're not losing your mind. That did happen. But as you know, with very little fanfare, like two meetings ago, if I remember right, you ratified contracts for SEIU, DCU, and ATU. And the contract that's before you tonight, we had a, we had a 2013 through '15 contract with PFSP. In order to align it with what we're doing with the other contracts, and to begin to address equity between employee groups and health insurance, PFSP agreed to reopen and extend their contract. So, what we're doing is replacing that 2013-'15 contract now with a 2014 through 2017 contract. So, for 2014-'15 school year, it increases the COLA in that contract from the 1% that was negotiated to the one and a half, which is consistent with the other operational contracts. It also increases the district's contribution towards health insurance to align it with what is in all those other operational contracts, and again, to begin to address the equity within the bargaining units. Perhaps more exciting about what we're doing here tonight is that with the ratification of this contract tonight, we will have finalized negotiations with every one of our bargaining units through June 30th of 2016.
We're excited.
Gives us a little bit of stability and time to work on some other important things with our groups. I would want, I want to make sure to acknowledge Ross Hume. He's the senior manager, and he's in, in my department, and he's the chief negotiator for the PFSP contract, working with their staff. And also, gratitude to Belinda Regan and Michelle Batten, the staff at PFSP, to their bargaining team, and indeed, to all of their members for agreeing to reopen their contract and ratify it. So, I'm very happy to bring this forward tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, great. And I see Belinda and Michelle both up in the back, so thank you very much for being here this evening. On behalf of the board, we are very happy that we've reached common ground with PFSP partners and look forward to continuing the good work that brought us to the settlement. The board will now consider Resolution 4932, collective bargaining agreement between Portland Federation of School Professionals and School District Number 1J, Multnomah County. Is there a motion? Oh, second. Director Morton moves, and Director Regan seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 4932. Ms. Houston, any citizen comment on this?
No, there's not.
No, there's not. Is there any board discussion on this resolution? Director Atkins?
Just a quick comment. Again, I appreciate the flexibility of our union partners, the good thinking and kind of stewardship and partnership that our staff has done in bringing this about, and really having that, that long-term vision and wanting to bring around that parity and equity among our employee groups. Also, just wanted to call out appreciation for the, one of the features of this, which would be the adjustment for educational assistance. The work they do is so important in our district, and really appreciated that being part of the settlement. And then, just a general appreciation for the, the work of all the members of this bargaining unit, and how, how essential and indispensable they are in every single school and across this district. So, I'm very excited, and just thank you to our partners and to the staff.
Other comments? Director Regan?
Brock, just so the general public knows what employee group we're talking about, Portland Federation of School Professionals, can you just walk through some of who they represent, some of those employees, just to...
Sure. So, we often call PFSP our classified unit, because it's probably the, I think at one point in time, we have maybe 60 classifications that are represented. So, they really represent all of the non-certified staff within our schools. So, that's educational assistants, the par educators, and the special ed department. In addition, all the clerical and support staff throughout the district. So, in many ways, they're the bargaining unit that reaches every corner of the district. There's many folks here in this building that do the support of the central departments. Even, you know, when we talk about ATU and student transportation, we have PFSP folks out there, I think the route schedulers and all that. So, again, they're just throughout, and it's almost anybody in the district who is not certified, who works in the schools, and then all of that clerical and support, library assistants. It's really too numerous to list. But, as Ruth pointed out, and I know you all agree, it's the people that are invaluable in helping everybody else get their work done, and that just do amazing work with really all of our students and our staff.
So, and the reason I wanted to ask you to do that is just so people understand, this is our second-largest union, representing a well over 1,000 employees. And I think a lot of times, our union contract negotiations get overshadowed because of our teacher contract, and I think it's important for us to take the time to recognize that we have, you know, several other different employee groups that make a huge, huge difference for our kids, and I'm really appreciative of the collaborative spirit and coming together and working on a contract without a whole lot of drama, and getting to where we need to get to for kids. So, thank you, thank you.
Others?
It's probably already been said, but I, just want to again highlight the effort that we're making to begin to find parity between our representatives, that really so many of our staff are crucial to the operating of our buildings and to the relationships that we do with schools. So, I've really appreciated both staff's recommendation and our moving towards a greater equity, especially PFSP. They've, they've really been cooperative with us in times that have been really challenging. And so, in times when things are feeling slightly improved, it, I appreciate our effort, and I thank them for reopening their contracts, so that we can get moving on, on trying to bring in some more, more parity with our representative groups, so.
Okay, the board will now vote on Resolution 4932. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Resolution 4932 is approved by a vote of six to zero, with student representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Yay! Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I'd also like to mention the bargaining agreements that the board approved at our June 2nd meeting, between the Amalgamated Transit Union Local 757, representing our bus drivers, the District Council Union, representing trade workers and laborers, and the Servants Employee International Union Local 503, School Employees Union Local 140, representing custodial nutrition service employees. All of these unions provide exceptional service to our students, and we thank them. They keep our schools and our facilities running and, and clean. They feed our students. PPS is the biggest restaurant in the state, and they get our students to school safely. So, I'd like to ask for another round of applause for all of these employee groups who help. Thank you very much. I will now, we're going to move on to amendment number three to the 2013-14 budget, and I will entertain a motion to recess the board from its regular meeting and open a public hearing as proposed, on the proposed 2013-14 budget. Motion? A second? Director Belial moves, and Director Morton seconds the motion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes. Any opposed? Motion is approved by six to zero, with student representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Superintendent Smith, will you introduce this item?
I will. So, David Winding, who's our deputy chief financial officer, and Sarah Bottomley, who's our assistant budget director, will walk you through the amendment number three to the 13-14 budget.
Co-chair Knowles, board members, Superintendent Smith. Happy to be here to talk about the third and final amendment to the 2013-14 budget. You have a recommendation from the superintendent that details most of this. I want to just summarize three or four things that are really here. So, one of the things that we have to do each year, towards the end of the year, is to make sure that we have appropriated enough money in each fund by the appropriate appropriation level, so that we stay within budget law. We think that's important. We want to true up some of our funds to reflect things that have happened over the course of the year. We look at whether or not there's any activity that we want to carry over from one year to the next, where we planned on something and budgeted for something to happen this year, and in fact, it hasn't happened in the timeframe that we thought, so we'll move the budget from this year to next year, and then we look at if there are any other changes that we need to make. So, in the amendment before you, there's examples of, of all of those things. In the general fund, we appropriate money in four or five different appropriation levels. We appropriate money for instruction, for support services, for a little often referenced category called enterprise and community services, for debt service and transfer out, and then what's left is in contingency. Enterprise and community services is a small category that covers family engagement staff and community agents, and one of the things we're doing in this budget amendment is making sure we have enough money appropriated to cover our expenditures in that area, because it turns out we're spending just a little bit more money than we thought at the beginning of the year. In funds outside the general fund, we're truing things up for various things that have happened during the course of the year, like earning more interest on things and things like that. And then, transfers, there's a couple of things to call out when it comes to transfers. One thing that we're doing is paying off some two small debts that we have as a district, because our general fund is ending up with a ending fund balance that's in line with where we budgeted. We're taking this opportunity to pay off those debts. That will help us out in future years. And then, the other thing that we're doing is kind of bond, it's kind of budget geeky, so I'm going to walk you through that just a little bit more. You will remember that back in May, we talked to you about the fact that with the capital bond, we had a debt payment that we had to make, and the money from the capital bond, the tax money, comes in big chunk in November, and then it comes in increments after that. And we had to make a bond payment at the beginning of June. At that point, we hadn't received the June tax revenues, or the July, or the August revenues, and we, you approved us making an inter-fund loan to cover that. At the time that we had to close the books on the budget amendment, and run the numbers and balance, and produce all these documents, we hadn't received the June money either, and we had to be ready to cope with the situation where that might not be enough money. And so, we put a transfer of $1 million from the general fund into the debt service fund just in case we needed to do that. The good news is that that June 15th payment came in, and it was more than enough to cover all of the payments that we'd made. It paid off the inter-fund loan. Everything's good. Everything's fine. We won't need to make that transfer. So, those are all the things that are in this budget amendment, number three, to close out the 13-14 year and make sure our budget is fine.
Thank you very much. Ms. Houston, is there any citizen comment on this resolution? No. Okay. Do you have a comment?
I have a question.
You have a question? Okay, go ahead.
Are you saying we have $1 million more dollars than we thought we were going to have?
No.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay.
Could I ask you a few questions, or do we need to put the amendment out there first? I had one quick question as I was looking through this. Energy-efficient schools fund to the facilities capital fund. It looks like you're moving $361,000, and it looks like it's just a reallocation of funds.
Yes.
Received under state energy reimbursement program, so I'm very interested in energy efficiency. And my question is, as we shift those funds from energy-efficient schools fund to the facilities capital fund, will those still be used for energy efficiency initiatives?
They were used for energy.
They were used.
They were used.
Okay. So, they're just being paid for out of a, it's just being shifted? It's not a change in priorities or anything?
It's just being moved. It's not a change in priorities at all. No, we spent the money in the facilities fund, and we're, we're truing up the accounting to make sure, and the budgeting to make sure that we have the money coming in and going to the right places.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to reconvene the board back into its regular session for the vote. Second. Director Regan moves, and Director Belial seconds. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes. Any opposed? The motion is approved by a vote of six to zero, with student representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Yes, great, thank you. Okay, we'll now consider Resolution 4933, amendment number three to the 2013-14 budget for School District 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Second. Director Atkins moves, and Director Regan seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 4933. Is there any other board discussion or questions for staff?
Just thank you for your diligence and hard work, as always.
Thank you very much. Yep. The board will now vote on Resolution 4933. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes. All opposed, please say no. Resolution 4933 is approved by a vote of six to zero, with student representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Yes. Great. Thank you very much. I think they're staying. And now, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is the adoption of the 2014-15 budget. On May 19th, the board, sitting as a budget committee, held a public hearing and voted to approve the 2014-15 budget. Superintendent Smith, is there anything you'd like to add at this time? Okay, the board will now consider Resolution 4934, impose taxes and adoption of the fiscal year 2014-15 budget for School District 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon. Is there a motion? And a second?
Second.
Director Regan moves, and Director Atkins seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 4934. Ms. Houston, do we have citizen comment? No, we do not. Is there board discussion about the budget?
Sure. Okay.
Director Buell?
I'm not going to be able to vote for the budget as it is for two reasons, and I don't want either reason to reflect in any way whatsoever on our levy that is coming up, because we certainly have some nice guidelines to make sure that levy money is spent correctly and according to the, how it's laid out in the levy. So, I don't, this is, I had two problems with the budget. First of all, we have a responsibility as a public body with this huge budget to give a, to do a good job of taking a look at it, and the school board itself did what I could refer as being super kind, as a shoddy job. We didn't spend time, energy that we should have. A few seconds per million dollars is what we had scheduled, and it was really poorly done. And the second part is, that did not allow us to look at the, what, I keep coming up with a number of $14 million of consulting contracts dealing around education, not having to do with facilities or special ed or anything else that we really need to take a good, hard look at. I tried to move $1 million so we could have high school social service coordinators, so we could get out and get at some of those kids in our high schools who had some really difficult problems, and really, that wasn't, we didn't really take a good, solid look at that. There were other things that I was really concerned about that we didn't look at, and so, I'm not going to be able to vote for the budget. And like I say, I hope this doesn't have any reflection, because it doesn't mean on the levy, which I support entirely, and which is spelled out very carefully. So, there you go. Thank you.
Other board discussion? Director Morton?
One of the things, I will be voting for it. I would kindly disagree with Director Buell. I think quite a bit of time and effort went into reviewing this, including listening sessions that began months before the budget was prepared, sessions that we spent here, hours and hours that we spent here, before we received a recommendation from, from the superintendent. But my, my comment is particularly around the 8% equity investment, and, and one of the things that I would like to see, I think this was a huge victory for the equity work within the district, not this budget, but the last budget, when it first, we first approved it. Happy to see it again this year, but I'm really interested in seeing how we track that ourselves in, in how it actually addresses issues related to our racial educational equity policy. Oftentimes, this is, we have the formula, well, we do have the formula that, that really adjusts this based on, based on FTE within certain schools that have a certain, sort of the equity students in, in those special education, English language learners, historically underserved communities, and those oftentimes show up in those buildings as FTE, oftentimes incrementally. And those oftentimes show up in those buildings as FTE, oftentimes incremental FTE. So I'm really curious how we attach that to our strategy around higher, selecting and hiring teachers of color. Interested in, in support services, particularly for kids who, who fall into those categories, instead of just where can we, I mean, I appreciate building level autonomy, but I also want to see if this is an equity investment, I want to see the, the outcome actually do things like reduce the achievement gap, like improve outcomes when it comes to our investment in the Minority Teacher Act, things like that. So, that's one of the things as we move forward, I would, I would really appreciate seeing, and even as we perhaps perform our audit and our citizen budget review in the next year, look at, look at how those things turned out.
Others? Director Regan?
So, most of my comments are very positive. I have one little gripe that I'll start with, just for fun, which is that I did offer an amendment to this budget, which I think was an incredibly reasonable amendment, and it was around the administrative tables for our comprehensive high schools and schoolwide support, which I feel are wholly inadequate, and I believe I have some assurance that we'll be looking at that for sure in the next budget round. So that's my huge disappointment in this budget. But outside of that, I, I think it's worth reminding people that most of our budget, we really, as a board, don't have a lot of control over. It's mostly salaries and benefits, and the small ability that we do have to prioritize and to influence the budget, I think we take pretty seriously. And in particular, in this case, I think we had an opportunity this year through our budget. We added, we added days, we added teachers, we've reduced the student-teacher ratio, we've added counselors, we now have counselors in every single school. And I'm just, just as I was sitting here, I just started jotting down some of the things. It's just so exciting to be able to be looking at sort of a reinvestment budget, as opposed to cutting, I've been on the board for 11 years, and this is a really fun position to be in, to be kind of adding back and making investments where we need them. We certainly have done lots of investments to support our struggling students. So I think we owe a huge debt of gratitude to our legislators for stepping up this year in such a big way to support us and to support our students. I'm grateful that we reached an agreement with the Portland Association of Teachers that I think ended up being really positive agreement for our kids. And mostly, I'm also grateful to our taxpayers and the fact that we do have a local levy in place. There are many districts throughout the last few years who were still facing furlough days, and, you know, we, we didn't the last few years. We weren't in the position of, of cutting days, and we, in fact, have tried to maintain reasonable class sizes at some level. We've, in this budget, certainly have enrichments and support. So, in the last couple of weeks, I think we all spoke at Portland High School graduations. It's certainly, I think, the most fun that I have, being on the Portland School Board, is having the opportunity to see our kids walk across stage, and to shake their hand, and to talk with them. And I, I always talk to seniors beforehand, and kind of reflect back to them what I've heard. And, you know, one of the things that, every single year for 11 years, and I usually do two or three graduations, the one consistent thing I've heard when I ask the questions, what do you wish could have been different, is students talk about the budget cuts and the impact that that has on them, and the insecurity that it, and the, how much they feel for their teachers and, and for staff when budget cuts are happening. And so I always remind them, and it was particularly fun to remind them this year, that one of the things we really need them to do, and all of us to do, is to register to vote and to participate in the process, because that's what makes a difference ultimately. And, you know, one of the things that I remind the kids is, you know, they just received a gift of free public education. I mean, and it's a pretty remarkable foundation that we've given them. So, I think with the limited ability that we have to prioritize our budget and to try to have an impact, to me, when I look at our budget this year, we've put it in the right places for the most part, and I'm, I'm pleased to be able to support this budget.
Director Atkins?
That was beautifully said. Thank you so much, Director Regan. I just would add my thanks to the Citizens Budget Review Committee for all the many hours of work they put in and the oversight and guidance they've provided, on top of the weeks and weeks and months of hard work from the staff that's culminating in this moment, as well as by the board, and all the folks in the community who emailed and testified and communicated with us in various means. Although less in past years because we are not in a cuts mode, really important reminders of where we are still not whole in our district, where we still have class sizes that are too high, we still have schools without librarians and so forth, where we're still, even though we greatly appreciate what the legislature did to turn the corner, really important reminders that it was not a uniformly rosy picture. We're doing our best through the equity lens to address the shortfalls, but we're still not there as a district or as a state. So, that was really important feedback to hear along the way, even though it was, by and large, a better and welcome change in the budget this year. And then finally, just thanks tonight to the Tax Supervising Conservation Commission, whose legal job it is to officially review, approve the budget, and they did that tonight through a hearing, and question and answer with the superintendent and Mr. Wind, and concluded by complimenting the district on just, they had no comments or concerns about the budget, and just complimented the district on an outstanding job, given especially the size and scope of the budget. So I just wanted to, since that was a sparsely attended hearing, to say the least, I just want to appreciate their work and their oversight, on top of the other work and oversight that has happened. And again, just the expertise and the dedication of our staff is just tremendous, so thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks. So, I will also be a vote, a yes vote on this. I, I think it's important to note some of Director Buell's concerns, and I hope that the summer sessions, those can be addressed, you know, whether board members should be
able to, to look more deeply at the budget and look at where can we really save money, you know, those kinds of things. Where should we put more money in? And I think that's an important step, considering, you know, you're all elected officials. I think that's something that you should at least talk about at the summer sessions, whether you want to do that or not. But I think, I, I really like this budget. I think it was a good mix of one-time investments and sustainability investments. I'm really excited about a couple of things that we're investing in, in particular, that I really hope will be foundations for the future, and I'm, I'm really excited to be building back. It's just a really exciting position to be in, so likewise. Thank you.
Director Buell?
Is there a comment? More than, I really appreciate Director Morton's comments about equity and what we should be doing surround that. I've been sitting here a year waiting for somebody to work with me on these things. I haven't been able to find anybody who is willing to really work with me on this stuff, who has some power on this board. I want to, would like to get our hiring up front for teachers of color and other things. Much better than we're doing, and I can't get anybody to work with me on that. I'd like to get the equities, the equity issue down into the classroom where we make some real improvements. Can't get anybody to work with me on that. I'd like to get the ESL straightened out, where we've got a big mess going on, and we, we're not getting enough time for children in our school system under the ESL program. Can't get anybody to work with me on that. So it's nice that we talk about this, but I'm waiting, I've been waiting a year now. I'd be glad to have somebody to work with me and kind of, who has some power on this board, to push for those equity issues and get them done. I haven't seen anything in the horizon, and so I, it's nice talk, but I'm ready for some action. Just let me know when you want to do it, folks.
Director Blyle?
Coming back to the budget, I just want to say that I've really appreciated the process, that there have been a number of discussions, and perhaps it, hearing Director Buell's concerns makes me realize maybe we need to frame some of our conversations and what we're prioritizing, so that people are clear that it's a budget discussion, because it seems to have escaped some folks. I also really appreciate getting the two budget books that we get, so that we can go in-depth and review every line item by line item, and I know that you both have made yourselves available, as has Neil Sullivan before he was here, when he was here, so that we could go line by line if we needed to and had questions and raise it. And I appreciate the opportunity to have made motions or amendments. Whether they were successful or not is obviously due to a majority of the board, but I have appreciated that opportunity. I wanted to echo Director Atkins' thanks for the Tax Supervising Conservation Committee, Commission for their hearing tonight. I thought they asked some really good questions, and if folks weren't, weren't able to make it, I hope that they can review a transcript of that meeting somewhere, because they asked some really, I thought, great questions that our public would be really interested in and curious about, and would be interested in the responses to that. And I also want to thank Superintendent Smith, because through our, our budget discussions, I think that you were able to craft a message, which by the lack of our changing, really reflected a majority of the, the concerns and issues. And to Director Regan's point about wanting to amend the, the staff admin table, I hope that we are still looking at that as we move into the fall. And I think, again, it's a testament to the fact that how well you listen to the community and prioritize to put together this budget. And while I do want to thank the legislature for their changing the trajectory of our budgets, I want to echo student representative Davidson's mention that if we believe that this is where we need to be, if we don't continue to push for an increase, then we are complicit in our current funding for education. And I know that some members in the community are tired of me, hearing me say that, but I'm not going to say it because, I'm not going to stop saying it, because it's the truth. The fact of the matter is, is we are woefully underfunded, and I really appreciate the legislature's attempt this year to change state law so that the funding that voters intended to come back to the district isn't being diverted to urban renewal districts, that in fact, it can come back to the district. And so I'm looking forward to putting forth the local option levy for a renewal. It shouldn't cost people anything more, it's the exact same rate, but what it will do is it will, again, increase the funding by about $4 million to Portland Public Schools, so that we can continue to make these investments. And like Director Regan, when I get to go talk with graduating seniors consistently, what I hear is, our students want more. They are not sitting there wishing they could have less work or less opportunity. They, they are craving more opportunity, and what we need to do that is more resource. And so we've been really effective with the resources we do, that we've had. We are building back slowly our reserves, so that in case and when the economy goes back down, we will better be, be better prepared to offset some of those decreases. But I just want to thank staff for putting together this budget. I thank my colleagues for having real discussions and continuing to bring differing opinions, whether or not we agree with it all or not. But I'm looking forward to voting for this. And Superintendent Smith, I'll say congratulations on your first budget as superintendent that actually reinvests dollars that are not as a reduction of somewhere else. I think frequently about how, how your tenure has been plagued by nothing but reductions, and how difficult it is to lead an organization when there is no real new investment, it's just investment reprioritization, because it always feels like things are being taken away. So, congratulations on a first reinvestment budget, even though that reinvestment is smaller than we would hope.
Others? So I will just say that I thank Bobby for her eloquence in talking about the budget. Nice job, and I agree totally. And like everybody, I'm hoping that we're going to be able to look back in the fall at the high school staffing table as well, and hopefully we'll have some more funds there that we can fill in a bit with that. But especially for the people who are watching us or listening to us later, I think it's really important to address Director Buell's comments about the board not being involved in this budget. As Director Blyle mentioned, we receive budget books, we all go through them in detail, or at least I did, and I'm assuming everybody else did. And our budget process goes on throughout the year. Every time we're looking at a program, we're, we're thinking about that program with regard to the budget. When the superintendent went out with her staff and held stakeholder meetings on budget, budget priorities, those are opportunities, and often the, the board attends those as well. Meetings with groups such as the Coalition of Communities of Color, the Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee, the Achievement Compact Advisory Committee, the District Employee Leadership Stakeholder Team, and the Citizens Budget Review Committee, all groups that the superintendent reaches out to, to get their input on our budget. In addition to that, the board heard presentations on a number of our budget topics, those things that we went deep into, including on September 16th, I have a list here, September 16th, an expansion of dual immersion, on December 2nd, on our budget priorities, on January 21st, how changes might be sustained over years to come, because we don't want to make investments that we then have to turn around and disinvest. On the, on February 12th, college and career readiness and athletics, on March 3rd, on school staffing, and on March 10th, on early learning, and on athletics again. So, the board spends a lot of time over the year looking at our budget priorities and trying to establish those, and we do go into detail in our budget books, and we do look at ways that each one of us individually might want to make changes. And just because we don't agree, doesn't mean that we're not listening or we're not paying attention. So, I want to thank you, Superintendent Smith, for this budget, and I also will thank the legislature for that investment that they, or I guess the turning of the corner, I think is the best way to describe it, because it's, it's, the good thing is, it's an investment, it's not another cut. So, I'm very pleased to be supportive of this budget tonight. So, we will now consider Resolution 4934, impose taxes on the adoption, we already did this, didn't we? The, the board will now vote on Resolution 4934. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
The Resolution 4934 is approved by a vote of five to one, with student representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Yes. Great. Thank you all very much. It's a long process. Okay, 9:10. Well, we're ahead of schedule by about a half an hour. Yes. I think it's because we didn't have any citizens coming and commenting, which is not a good thing. Okay, now on to the local option referral. The board first heard and discussed this item at our last meeting. Superintendent Smith, is there anything you'd like to add before we vote?
No, just that I'll ask John Isaacs to come up and be present for any questions that you may have, but otherwise you had an initial discussion and would you?
Excuse me. The board will now consider Resolution 4935, calling for a five-year local option levy to support schools. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Director Regan moves, and Director Atkins seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 4935. Ms. Houston, do we have any citizen comment?
We do not.
We do not. Is there board discussion on this resolution? You all recall that we discussed this at our last meeting. Is there any further discussion?
This is the morning you just got, right?
Director Regan?
I would just remind people that we actually did have some public comment on this, which was our, head of our Portland Association of Teachers was here earlier tonight, talking in support of this, and so it's actually fun for us to be working together with the Portland Association of Teachers on this particular initiative. And I think it's, it's, it's good to remind people that our entire local levy currently pays for about 600 teaching positions, and all we're looking at doing with this renewal is to go out a little bit early and take advantage of a change in the process that the legislature is allowing, so that we'll actually be able to capture about another four or four and a half million dollars more, because money that voters think is going to pay for teaching positions is currently being moved over to the city of Portland to pay for urban renewal. And it's also, I think, important for people to know that the city of Portland is supportive of this levy referral also, and, and this change, and actually worked with us in Salem on this. So, I'm completely excited to be voting in favor of going up for this levy again. I think it's the right thing. It's going to make a difference for our kids, and grateful to our community, again, for considering it.
That's it? Okay. Okay, the board will now vote on Resolution 4935. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 4935 is approved by a vote of six to zero, with student representative Davidson Resolution 4935 is approved by a vote of six to zero, with Student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Yes. Okay, let's move on to Roosevelt High School schematic design. Again, the board heard and discussed this item at our last meeting. Superintendent Smith, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, just asking Jim Owens to come on up and be available for questions, but you guys saw the presentation and had extensive discussion at the last meeting.
Right. The board will now consider Resolution 4936, approving the Roosevelt High School schematic design, the commitment of additional funds, and initiating the design development phase work. Do I have a motion?
There's no move.
And a second?
Second.
Director Morton moves, and Director Belial seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 4936. Ms. Hewson, do we have any citizen comment?
No, we don't.
Oh. Is there board discussion on this resolution, in addition to what we've already discussed? Director Buell?
I'd like to ask Mr. Owens two questions. Going back to the STEM space and the maker space not being contiguous at Roosevelt, but what's different about, they've talked about it being different evidently, that it's in different spaces. What's the difference between the maker space and the STEM space?
The space has been reconfigured as part of additional consideration of looking at two primary maker spaces with adjacencies associated with some STEM learning areas. And so there are basically two areas that are not contiguous but provide the school the opportunity to provide different maker opportunities in each of the spaces.
What is it about the spaces themselves that, or the things that are going to take place in the places, the spaces, that make them better to not be contiguous as they are at Franklin? Is there something within the situation that you don't want them contiguous for some reason, or?
Well, it has to do with the way the design team approached how the spaces were aligned and to be able to accommodate as much as was possible. You may recall, early on, there wasn't as much of the space at Roosevelt, so this was the approach the team took to be able to be more expansive and to increase the amount of overall square footage that was available for the maker and the STEM spaces. So it really reflects an outcome that aligns with our budget targets and aligns with our schedule constraints.
You had a couple alternative designs that were put forth by members of the community right at the end. Did they, did we evaluate those designs, and what was the, what were our conclusions? Why did, why did we not like those designs and like the one that we had, I guess?
There was extensive community input around this. There's also a continuing effort on the part of the principal at Roosevelt to engage community in terms of how the curriculum will be delivered in those spaces, and that is going to be ongoing over the summer. But in terms of the facility layout, this represents, in the design team's staff's opinion, to be the most adaptable in terms of how the spaces would be utilized, both near term when the construction completes as well as long term.
Thank you.
Director Regan?
So first of all, I'm incredibly excited for the Roosevelt community, just as I was for the Franklin community, that we're at this stage where we're voting in support of this. I do know that there are some concerns still out there in terms of the design, and again, there was this one letter that we recently got from our Portland, our schools. My assumption is that as we move into the design development phase, there will still be some opportunities for community input and support and engagement. And I guess my big question is, what is the future role of the DAGs, the Design Advisory Groups?
So by charter, the Design Advisory Group will continue to engage during the design development phase, and so staff will be presenting the DAG with the evolution of the design. I think it's worth pointing out that schematic design is really the beginning, and so much of what has been laid out will be further developed over the next several months that design development will take place. The project team will be scheduling Design Advisory Group meetings, and there will be opportunity for the, for the team to be presenting how the work is evolving.
So I think I would just ask what I asked last week, which is around the CTE spaces in particular and how those are designed, if we hopefully might bring in some CTE, actual CTE teachers, hopefully during the next process, to help us design the spaces that we have to be most effective for our kids in terms of their learning experience. So I guess that's the one thing I would actually...
And I may not have been clear, we're actually, under the principal, under Charlene Williams, she's actually putting a committee in place that will involve CTE teachers, and she'll get different perspective, and they'll be doing that over the course of the summer. I know they're looking at late August timeframe to be completing their work, but that'll very much influence the configuration of the spaces. In addition to the construction, there is also the outfitting of the spaces, the furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, the technology, and much of that will be influenced based on this process and input that goes into how these spaces are going to be laid out.
Great, and hopefully we can include some of our CTE, you know, passionate advocates in that process as well, because I was very grateful for their input as we went, so thank you.
Well, I also think that we have to, again, call out how lucky we are to have an architect with 30 years of experience in over 50 schools where he's been doing this kind of work with CTE spaces. So we are very fortunate to have someone like this on this particular project, so. Director Morton?
Quick question, do we have any seats open on the DAG for Roosevelt?
To my, to my knowledge, we do not.
Okay.
At this, at this time.
Okay. That would be something, I guess, to consider is, as seats become available or participation is low, perhaps other, other opportunities for people to get involved.
I guess I would comment that in addition to the DAG members themselves, we also have quite a bit of participation by community members who, while not DAG members, attend the meetings, provide opportunity to comment about the work, and so I would expect that would, that would continue.
That's great. The other...
Are any of those CTE teachers?
Yes, one is, one is a CTE teacher.
Great.
The other comment I wanted to make, and I think I mentioned this when we looked at the, when we had the last discussion, but it really is a, what I would consider an inspired design, and one, and also a design that is, is very inspiring. And, and I think that, to me, is exciting to see, and I think the, it matches my experience with the Roosevelt community as well, because that's an incredibly inspiring school, both with the staff and, and with the student, students in the community that supports them. So, well done on the design.
The board, did you have, Director Buell?
Mr. Owens, are you familiar with the OPUS list of seven questions?
No, sir, I am not.
This one that they sent to the school board?
I was not...
Nobody copied? Nobody copied you? Well, I guess I should ask him, huh? I guess. Well, I want to ask him these seven questions that OPUS has, since he hasn't been copied these things. So I hate to do it, but it takes a lot of time. They're pretty lengthy questions, but if he hasn't been copied them, and no one, and maybe...
Director Buell, do they have any effect on how you would vote? Would Mr. Owens' answers have any effect on how you're going to vote? Do they have something to do with how...
I don't know, that hasn't to have anything to do with the question.
Yes, it directly has something to do with it.
Well, yeah, if he gave perfect answers or something, I might vote one way or the other. I'm actually on the fence still.
Well, you wouldn't, you won't be in order, and I haven't seen the questions myself, so I don't know if they're in order.
They send to the board.
I haven't seen my email.
Well, my questions don't have to be in order with you, they only have to refer to what we're talking about.
No, it's, it's...
They don't have nothing to do with...
It's whether, it's whether they are in order under this particular item on our agenda.
They are, they're on the order. They're all under the order.
Okay.
Now, has maybe somebody else there has seen these questions? Has anybody? Have any of you seen these questions?
No, we have not.
No.
Okay, there we go. One. What are the formula and the...
You could paraphrase them a little bit?
I've tried to, but I don't have them memorized well enough to really paraphrase them. What are, and the reason, they talked about getting, having asked these before and getting insufficient answers on these questions, so first one is, what are the formula and the numbers behind the changes in building capacity?
Well, and I think, I think this staff...
We still have not seen the math for understanding the capacity issues. What actual...
You're interrupting me.
Did I interrupt you?
Yes, you did.
Oh, I thought you were interrupting me. I got confused there for a while. Sorry.
There'll be some of these questions, I'm assuming, that staff, you won't like that question. Do you have an answer to that without going back and looking at this?
The capacity model is very complex, and we would want to be able to, to bring a complete response to that question to you, and being able to prepare for it and perhaps even having some slides to support the understanding of the mathematics behind the capacity model would be most appropriate.
So the response there would be?
There's no answer right now.
Send the OPUS people a specific answer to this question?
Certainly we can, and they...
Send it to me?
Mr. Owens has offered repeatedly to meet with members of OPUS and to go over these materials with them, has gone over some of these materials with them in the past, so...
So you'll send me the answer, I guess? I can forward it to them?
Maybe we could just send the questions to you, and you could follow up. There we go.
Well, I'm, the problem with that is that these are, these should be public questions.
Well, then OPUS could certainly post them on their website, and they would be public, and then we could post the answers.
Well, I mean, they should be public at the school board. The school board should be, I mean, you know, we're asking questions on this, I guess. Should I, maybe I just should go on for the other questions.
Director Morton?
I think this, I, I think these are probably, we received these, these questions and probably, I didn't look at the, I didn't look at who all it was sent to, so perhaps it's, I will take partial credit for not forwarding this to the appropriate staff. But, but I think one of the things that this, this lends to is the, what we were talking about earlier with our audit, in our audit conversation, and that there are circumstances where questions persist and we need to, and I believe there are efforts that have been made, and I believe there's considerable efforts that have been made, but at some point, we have to make sure that, that the information that we're providing is clear and concise and understandable. And then there are moments when we've provided as, as much clarity as, as possible, and we, we move forward. I'm prepared, at this moment, to make a decision and vote for this resolution. That doesn't mean that these questions aren't important or should not be answered, but I'm not certain these are questions, look, rereading these and looking at the specificity that would be needed to answer them, they would be questions that we would be able to answer this evening. I think they could be done in, in a public setting, but I think they could also be something that were published. Here are some questions that we received, and we're publishing them out there in an email or in our Facebook page, or whatever it might be, or on our website.
We have an FAQ section on the bond, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Director Buell, would that suffice for public notice of this, if we put the questions up and put the answers on the, on our frequently asked questions on the web? I, I think I would emphasize what Director Morton's saying about, some of these are just going to be impossible for staff to answer on the spot here.
Yeah, I think so too, that they'll kind of be impossible for them to answer on the spot.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have no problem with putting up, I would like to ask, there was a, there is one that I'm particularly interested in, and so I guess we have these questions, would the chairperson then send them to whomever's going to ask them, and put them up on the...
I will certainly send them.
Okay.
I'm sure that I have them.
Get that done.
Am I on that list? I haven't seen it. Great. I'd be happy to send them to staff.
I may ask number six, though. We heard last week that the per-school costs have suddenly fallen. Is that correct? And if that's the correct, why is that? Or why is it not, or something?
We didn't hear the question.
It says, you guys have those questions over there?
Yes.
Oh, you do have those questions?
Director Regan gave us a copy.
Somebody, that was nice of you, thank you, Bobby. Number six, which is about the, did the per-school costs drop?
I don't understand, I'm reading the question, I don't understand it.
Okay. It's going to be tough to put it on the fact, and...
Per-school costs have not dropped, I don't...
They haven't, none of them haven't dropped?
But I don't, I don't even understand the framework of the question.
Okay.
I read it, but I don't.
Fair enough. Then they haven't dropped, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. We'll see them up on the, by, when will we see them up, by?
When would staff be able to have those up?
Week or two?
In a week? Two weeks?
Certainly seems reasonable.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I can live with that.
Anything else?
No, that's fine. Yeah.
All right. Director Belial?
I'm really excited for us to move forward with Roosevelt. It won't surprise you, it is a great design, and I know that staff have gone to extensive lengths to answer questions and provide feedback, so I really appreciate all that effort. In fact, I did have an opportunity to read those questions before, and OPUS specifically says, "We are choosing not to come publicly in front and make these questions addressed in public to the board tonight," because they want to be clear that they support us moving forward and continue to have some questions, so are looking forward to engage. So I just, to the point of them not being public or whether or not to share them all here this evening, I think it's well within the spirit of why they shared it with us, and moving forward to continue to ask questions and work with us. So I'm really excited for, for the design this evening. As Director Knowles pointed out, we have a fantastic architect that's working hard on this, staff is working really hard on making sure this is, going to be an exciting project, and I've just appreciated all the efforts and continued engagement through this to get us to where we are so that we can move forward. And I just want to caution that as we continue to move forward, all your efforts to keep us on schedule despite our delays in continuing to ask questions back and forth, I've appreciated your continued positive attitude to try to get this delivered on schedule, even though we are now considerably behind...
110 days.
110 days behind schedule, so thank you.
Can I add? Anything else?
The only thing I would add is, I appreciate everything Director Belial just said about us needing to keep on track, but really being excited about seeing this come to fruition. I just keep thinking about, I think of the visuals that the architect showed us last time, that, that entrance to the new performing arts complex, the entrance and the community plaza to the wraparound service, the entrance to the new, I think it was the aerobics, community aerobics room, weight room, athletic facilities that lead to the fabulous track and field that have already been established, and especially the opening up of that gorgeous historic front, front porch, if you will, of the front facade of Roosevelt. So those visuals just keep going through my mind, and it's just so incredibly exciting, and I just can't wait to see it come to reality, and we just need to do everything we can in our role to just keep this process on time and on budget, so thank you for all your hard work.
Okay, the board will now vote on Resolution 4936. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Director Buell? Resolution 4936 is approved by a vote of five, five to zero, with one abstention, with Student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. And I'll forward those questions to you.
We may want to check with OPUS to make sure they want them up in public. If they don't, then it's fine, we can not put them up. But they certainly should be sent to them.
We already voted to put them up, didn't we?
No, we didn't vote to put them up. Want to make a motion on that? Be more than happy to do that.
Okay, let's move on to community eligibility provisions. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item?
I would, and Tony Magliano, our chief operating officer, is going to give us an update that's highly informational on community eligibility provision. And Gita?
I have a hostess staff to support me on this one. Good evening, Chair Knowles, Director, Superintendent Smith. In your board packages is an informational report on the community eligibility program. Tonight's presentation is to inform the board of staff's plan to implement community eligibility provision... of staff's plan to implement community eligibility provision in September of 2014. I'll summarize briefly what the program is, and then I have, this was a cross-departmental effort, so I have various staff here. If there's any questions when I'm done. Community eligibility provision is part of the Hunger Act, Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010. It allows high-poverty schools to offer both breakfast and lunch at no charge to all students, while eliminating the traditional school meal application process. CEP benefits students and the school nutrition department's bottom line. It increases participation, it reduces school-level administrative work, and it improves the overall financial viability of nutrition programs in high-poverty schools. In 2011 and 2012 school year, in Illinois, Kentucky, and Michigan, where it has already been piloted, breakfast participation increased by 25 percent, lunch participation increased by 13 percent. The number of eligible students are determined by those who are directly certified for free meals because they live in households that participate in the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, TANF, or Food Distribution Program on Indian Reservations, as well as children who are certified for free school meals without submitting a school meal application because of their status as being in foster, care, enrolled in Head Start, homeless, runaway, or migrant students. CEP does not impact students already participating in free and reduced meals, meaning students who are currently receiving free and reduced meals will continue to receive free and reduced meals regardless of whether their school is CEP-eligible or not. I've included a graph in your pack, in your packets. Hopefully, I can figure out the laser pointer on this thing. Maybe not. That's the power. I don't want to press that. Uh, thank you. Top one. While CEP is authorized to be implemented at those schools where there's 40 percent eligible students, if you look at the graph in your informational report and on the PowerPoint, you'll observe that there's a break-even point right here. And what happens is, by being able to group schools together, those schools that are high CEP, you actually are reimbursed at a greater level, which allows you to fund these additional schools. So, the grouping effort, instead of only being able to do 10 schools, we are able to implement this in 23 schools. In addition, staff is recommending to the superintendent that both Madison and Alliance High Schools be added to the program because of the many feeder schools that participate in free and reduced meals, and the demographic of the students that those high schools serve. Staff has thoroughly looked into the impact of participating in this program with regard to staffing, Title I, combined underserved, and our E-rate reimbursement, and we've determined that it's a negligible, negligible impact in those areas. At this time, if there's any questions, we have staff here that are prepared to answer them.
Director Belial?
I think I just have one quick question. On this graph, thank you for under, for explaining, first of all, what the dotted line meant. It wasn't marked, so I wasn't clear what, why that was where the dividing line was. The second piece is, I just noticed a school that has recently lost its Title I funding in the past two or three years isn't on that graph, Lewis. And I'm just curious if it was inadvertently left off, or where it would fall. It's lower than 40 percent?
Yeah, it's lower than the 40 percent. So, these are just showing the schools that are 40 percent and higher. That would-
That's surprising, okay. That surprised me, because at, at one point, was that 40 percent? So, so maybe the demographics have changed?
Based on direct certification, not on free and reduced lunch. So, it's different.
Oh, so that, okay. Thank you. That helps.
Director Atkins? This is wonderful. Thank you so much. Very exciting. So, it appears, if I'm understanding correctly, that the federal government, for once, has actually reduced the burden on families and access to food. That is fantastic news. Maybe not on you all, and in doing the administration and compliance and all this other pieces, but for families and children, that's fantastic news. So, that's great. So, for schools that are below the threshold, does this mean that this existing system will continue, that students still have to apply individually?
Right.
And the, the federal government isn't providing any means of mitigating that for those students?
Not at this time.
Okay. Or even simplification of the application process, or?
Not yet. That's what the CEP is for, but it's only for certain schools.
Right. Because as we know, when you get, with, not even at the 40 percent, but below that, when you have students in poverty at a school that aren't necessarily the dominant population at the big concern of how to serve those students and make sure that their needs are met. So-
This is one step forward.
Right, exactly. So, that leaves my next question, which is, you mentioned that implementing the pro, new program down to the 40 percent level would require the use of the general fund dollars, and I was wondering how much, and what, what would be involved in doing that?
So, the formula is pretty complicated. It, an individual school, it, it varies what the impact would be. If you took the, all of those schools that are beyond the dotted line?
Right.
It's about a $648,000 additional cost to bring all those schools, and, and to feed all school, all students in those schools.
And again, that would mean providing a, a free lunch for everybody in the school because no one had-
And breakfast.
And breakfast, because nobody had to apply for it.
Right.
Okay. And there, again, there hasn't been any discussion about sort of a middle path of reduction in that annual certification of income, so one more form for poor families to fill out?
Not, not at this time.
Okay. I think that's another thing to talk to our federal delegation about.
There you go.
But it definitely appreciate the step forward in being able to feed more children, and just really appreciate all your good work in figuring this out and making it work for kids.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Student Representative Davidson?
Um, so I was wondering, how often do we reassess this, or do we at all?
On a yearly basis.
On a yearly basis. So, then how, so how are we tracking the, the percentage for each school? How are we doing that, without the free and reduced lunch?
So, it's by direct certification?
Okay, all right.
Of the students.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other comments? Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
Looking forward to hearing how this works out. During the summertime, yeah, I know. I know. Okay, so we'll now move to our business agenda. We'll consider the remaining items, having already voted on Resolutions 4931 through 4936. Ms. Houston, are there any changes to the business agenda?
Yes, there's one. On page six of the business agenda, the fourth item listed, the Pearson Contract, has been pulled.
The Pearson Contract?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any, oh, not yet. Okay, do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda? Yeah, let's, let's do this first. So, moved.
Second.
A second? Okay. Director Atkins moves, and Director Reagan seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment?
Yes, we have one. John Richardson.
Mr. Richardson, I think you've been here before. Are you aware of our rules about public comment? You know, you've got three minutes total? You'll see, you'll see the green light for two minutes, the yellow light is your last minute, and the red light means, and a buzzer means it's time to wrap it up. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is John Richardson, R-I-C-H-A-R-D-S-O-N. I'm a Grant High School parent and a member of the Portland Parents Coalition. As you're aware, PPS has been found by the Oregon Department of Education to be out of compliance with minimum state instructional hours by credit hour, 130 hours. And further, the ODE had, quote, "grave concerns regarding the district's compliance with the spirit of the law," end quote, relating to meeting the annual 990 instructional hours. Due to its lack of compliance with the spirit and letter of the law, PPS was required to commit, submit a corrective action plan, or CAP. A draft, six-sentence plan with a new schedule attached was submitted to ODE and to the Portland School Board for consideration. You are being asked by staff this evening to accept the plan via Board Resolution 4937. I'm speaking tonight to share the Parents Coalition's concerns about the proposed plan. These concerns have been communicated to you via email earlier, and will submit a formal response to ODE once the final and hopefully amended plan is approved by you. Of note, one, the plan is incomplete, as it omits a strategy to address the 990-hour minimum. PPS did not provide staffing or scheduling information during the spring budget process, so it's unclear if principals can provide students with opportunities to take enough classes to meet the minimum instructional hours of 990. Two, PPS has not committed in the CAP to implementing the May 2013 agreement that Superintendent Smith signed with the Parent Coalition. PPS cited the May agreement in its initial response to ODE, and the deputy superintendent referenced it in, under the necessary corrective action in his findings. In this agreement, Superintendent Smith agreed to build a staffing and forecasting framework and system earlier this year, and supporting, or, to ensure that all the students who needed or wanted a full day of classes can have one. Without this, PPS's commitment to staffing and supporting students in taking a full day of classes is diminished or unknown. Three, timely and transparent data was not available during the recent PPS budgeting cycle. In its CAP, PPS needs to share information with the community on a timely basis, things like forecasting data by school, staffing, workload, study halls, et cetera, and commit teaching resources where it's necessary. Item four, PPS states that a PAT grievance has been filed regarding the new schedule, but does not provide schedule and staffing options to ensure compliance should the grievance be upheld. Number five, an ongoing audit plan, agreed to with the Parents Coalition, should accompany the CAP to ensure compliance. We thank the district for the opportunity to review the proposed schedule aligned with 130 instructional hours per credit requirement. Finally, PPS should accurately describe why students were denied a full school day beginning in 2011. In its submission, submission of the draft CAP to the state, the reason why students did not have a full day of classes and receive the minimum 990 hours of instruction is mischaracterized. The facts clearly demonstrate that students were prevented from taking a full day of classes because the majority of the school board voted to only budget for students to take a partial day of classes, and eliminated more than 40 high school teaching positions. We urge you to require amendments to the CAP prior to approval and submission to the state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, is there any board discussion on the business agenda? Director Reagan?
I had wanted to pull Resolution 4937, so I can do a friendly amendment. You asked me, do I do that now, or do I just pull that?
Yeah.
Do I go ahead and do my amendment yet?
No, you make a motion.
You make a motion.
All right. So, my motion is to pull Resolution 4937, which has to do with the corrective action plan, to do a friendly amendment. Second?
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
So, then, do I go ahead and tell you what the amendment is?
Hang on, just a second. Just a second.
So, we just pull that?
I think, I think we're gonna go, yeah, just-
So, then, I had two other quick questions on the, um, business agenda, if people would bear with me for a second. The first one is on the new revenue contracts, page five, Self-Enhancement Inc. It looks like we are going to be leasing them space at the King Neighborhood Facility. Is the amount listed a per-year amount, or is that a total amount? That's for the five year, the five years?
Yes, Tony Magliano, Chief Operating Officer, that's a five-year amount.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Just a quick follow-up. Is that the space that was formerly a parole office, or is this a space that's different?
It's in the same building, so they're sharing it with the Northeast Neighborhood Coalition, so SEI and-
But the parole office is longer than, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then, my second question, Tony, you could probably answer as well. It's the very first new contract for Sheckley Northwest. The description is purchasing five, it looks like new school buses? And my question is whether those are relatively energy-efficient? I know we converted to propane at one point, or are they hybrid, or is there any energy-efficient?
I believe those are propane buses.
Okay.
Yes.
So, good. They're not, not gonna be horrible gas guzzlers. Okay. Good, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Oh, wait, while you're there, Tony, sorry. Can I ask you a question? Because I just wanted to call out, this in celebration of that awesome to see, that's next line down of District-Wide Purchase of 1,506 Chromebook Computers.
Right.
And, uh, just thrilled to see that investment, and I know you're not planning to make any kind of presentation about it, but I just wanted to call that out. It's a fantastic investment.
The start of the school year, every teacher has a Chromebook.
Excellent. That's awesome. That's great.
That's great.
There's actually a lot of really good stuff in here. We're proving it's really kind of a fun business agenda.
Okay, any other board discussion on the business agenda, except for 4937? No? Okay. The board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Any abstentions? The business agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero, with Student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, Director Reagan, did you want to talk about Resolution 4937?
Sure. I think you all have a copy of my amendment in front of you, and I believe there may be some copies up on the bookshelf over there for anyone in attendance. It's a pretty simple amendment that I'm looking at. When it was sent out by staff, in terms of our correction, corrective action plan, we talked about three things. One is the high school hours and the minimum high school hours. We talked about a parent complaint process. And then, the third thing is that we're going to be doing an audit to ensure that the corrective action plan is implemented appropriately, and that piece was left off. So, all I'm doing is on C. Instead of saying, "Staff has developed a corrective action plan to meet two requirements," it would say three. And the third one will read, "The district will submit to a follow-up process to ensure appropriate implementation of the corrective action plan. The audit process will be developed and agreed upon in collaboration with members of the Parents Coalition, and will be submitted to ODE no later than August 15, 2014." So, it's just making sure we have that piece in there.
Did you want to move that amendment?
I would.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, is there any other board discussion?
I have a question on this whole thing, but we're doing the amendment first?
Yes, we're doing the amendment.
So, we're adding the amendment, then we're going to vote on the resolution?
Yes.
I have a question on the amendment, I guess, of-
Okay. Director Buell?
You called specifically out the Parent Coalition to be involved, which is fine by me, but you didn't-
They're the grievants. They're the ones who made the official complaint to the Oregon Department of Education, so they're the ones that we have to-
I just wanted to know that, 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 that's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, the, the Oregon Department of Education basically said we needed to do this, so I'm just reiterating that.
Just checking why we didn't have, like, are there a couple other groups involved?
Okay, the amendment to Resolution 4937 has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion to amend 4937 passes with a vote of six to zero, with Student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay, now, we'll go ahead and vote on Resolution 4937. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Director Reagan moves, and Director Morton seconds approval of Resolution 4937. Is there board comment? Director Buell?
I have a question for the superintendent. We sent out, we have another grievance coming forth from the Portland Association Teachers around this.
Yes, we're engaged in talking, in working on that with them.
And we sent out four schedules to ask, to ask high school staffs to vote on it. And those four schedules, I keep talking to people who say-
We did not.
Well, where were the good schedules?
We did not. We sent out model schedules for discussion at high school staffs-
Oh, okay.
For principals to gain, to get input from their staff.
Okay.
So, that was part of the process. It wasn't a vote.
Were they allowed to come up with a new schedule to have input? Did we get anything like that? I mean, basically, as I understand it, there were four schedules, all of which were not very good, and that a lot of teachers had another schedule that they- very good, and that a lot of teachers had another schedule that they'd had in the past that were, that they liked, and so that wasn't available. I just wanted to, I don't know if that's the case. I've talked to an awful lot of people who say that's the case, so I don't know.
So I'll tell you...
Just as a comment that I'm making, more than a question?
And part of the complexity of the scheduling was being in compliance with this, so the this finding, and doing schedules at work, so a number of schedules that were presented to staffs were models of different schedules, that then they were seeking feedback from staff that the principal would consider in recommending to the district the schedule that they wanted.
Of the four that they had?
And what we were going for was also an agreement that we would put all of the high schools on a common schedule, so it was both within the staffs, but also among, between schools. What's the schedule we were agreeing to that met this criteria? So, yes.
So the...
But it was not, it wasn't a vote at individual schools.
It wasn't a vote, it was just a discussion, and some of the, and one of the things, as I understand it, tell me if I'm right or wrong here, I guess, is that there were differences based around whether you had priority and focus schools, where you wanted them on an eight-period day, and the other schools maybe, they didn't, people didn't want them necessarily, so why did we choose to have everybody on the identical schedule? Is there some sort of reasoning that we had behind that?
Pardon? You know, there were a lot of features to the schedules that were, and there was not a universal, like, there were people who wanted seven-period days for the kind of subject they teach, there were people who wanted eight-period, I mean, there was a lot of complexity in this conversation, and this is where we landed.
What's the grievance, based upon that?
Brock, I'll ask Brock to come on up and do it.
We keep losing these grievances, I'd rather not lose another one, but I just had this sneaky suspicion that we're paddling upstream again, maybe.
Before we start, I don't really think that this is in order right now to be talking about the grievance. We are discussing the corrective action plan and this amendment right now, not the grievance.
The grievance could have to do with the corrective action plan.
Well, I'm going to rule that it does not.
The grievance has nothing to do with this corrective action plan?
I'm going to rule that it does not.
So you're saying that the grievances are based on anything that we're doing in this action plan?
I'm ruling that it does not, that's right.
Are you kidding?
No.
Are we just kind of making this up as we go along?
No. Nope.
Do I have the minimum instructional hours?
Do you have any other comments about anything else?
Does the grievance have anything to do with minimum instructional hours?
It doesn't have anything to do with this corrective action plan.
Doesn't have anything to do with it, okay, okay, fine. If you want, I want to do it.
Director Regan?
So I just want to, again, express appreciation to the Parents Coalition for basically calling this out, because in the end, we will end up with a better high school schedule for our kids and more opportunities for our kids, and I just spent the last weekend, the whole weekend, at an Oregon School Boards Association meeting, and one of the things I was able to do was to talk through with the board the fact that, you know, many school districts across Oregon are probably not meeting the 190 or the 990, and I think, in fact, in the Oregonian, that it's already, we're already hearing that many school districts are getting waivers. We had to comply by next September, already other school districts, I think, had an extra year to get into compliance, and even then, I think some of them have asked for waivers. So, and one of the things that I made sure to let them know is that to get into compliance may require changes in teachers' contracts, and you're going to need a little bit of lead time for that discussion, because one of the things that we did was we added a couple of days instruction that helped us get there. So I'm grateful that the Parents Coalition did this, I'm hoping that other school districts are paying attention, and in the end, we're going to end up with a stronger high school program for our kids as a result, so.
Director Bial?
I just want to let folks know that I'll actually be voting no on this resolution, not because I don't agree with the corrective action plan, and not because I don't believe that our students will get more instructional time, and that's good for them, but more as a protest to the state. We often talk about local control, and this is, my understanding is part of the reason why so many school districts are applying for a waiver, is because they understand that the legislature is actually moving away from seat hours, and that they're actually looking to do some action, and so they're basically going to wait out the state to change, and so I find it, I find it inappropriate for them to hold us to a standard that they're willing to waive, and that they themselves are beginning to review, and it just feels, again, like a sense of local control, that the state's interjecting in this, especially knowing that our state superintendent himself didn't follow this when he was a superintendent. Not that that makes us right to short-change students, but I just want to say that my no vote is not, again, a reflection on whether or not this corrective action plan adequately addresses the complaint, not whether or not the complaint of having students in school all day isn't the right choice, but the mechanism which is used to do this is an example of the state, I think, overreaching, so.
We'll now vote, okay, the board will now vote on Resolution 4937. All those in favor?
Yes.
All those opposed?
No.
Abstentions?
Yes, I'm abstaining because I wasn't allowed to ask questions that I felt were pertinent to that issue.
Resolution 4937 is approved by a vote of four to one, with...
Three, one, one.
Well, then it's not approved.
So does somebody that approved it want to bring it back?
Yeah.
Four, one, two, yeah, three, four, that's right, that's right. Four to one, that's right. That's right the first time. Four to one with one abstention with Student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Great, we're done. The next meeting of the board will be held on Tuesday, July 8, 2014, and please note that our formal board meetings will now be on Tuesdays for the rest of the school year. This meeting is now adjourned.